If you may please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. You remain standing. We have Dave Mitchell, our Police Chaplain, is going to give us our vocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Father God, we're thankful that we can gather together in a place like this with people like these, that we can gather before you and under your watchful eye for the wisdom, for the knowledge, for the insight, for the ability to understand and to communicate, and Father, to carry out the work that is necessary for our community. God, we pray that you would guide each who participates tonight. Lord, that we would be led by you in some way that we may not even understand. But God, that it would make us a better, stronger, more prosperous community, that we unite us, that we would work together in partnership with one another, that we would care for one another and for those who are in tremendous need, and that, God, we would accomplish all those things that are important for the future generations that follow behind us. So guide us, Lord, guide us in the work. Our City Council, the staff, all those involved in the safety of our community as well. And for the citizens that are here, we thank you for it. For the privilege to work in a government like this, we pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. In a minute, I'm going to call on Mayor Potem Martinez to do both proclamations. One is on Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, and the other one is on naming September Hispanic Heritage Month. So why don't we go ahead and start, Michelle, and we'll do it together, but you take the lead.
Thank you, Mayor Polito. If I can please have Shaheed Saki from Executive Director from Accord, please join us. And then I think Flora Baraja, please join us. Andreas Rivera with Accord, and Karen. All of you with Accord. Great. So September 17 is really, you know, and we always get these talking points, but I want to talk really briefly about Accord. How are you doing, sir? And the great work that they've been doing across this region here in Orange County, and in particular, the city of Santa Ana, pertains to citizenship. And really working with our friends in the labor movement to making sure that we're able to help many residents as they move forward in their path to citizenship. They've done a phenomenal job. And so I just want to thank you all for your effort and your continued effort to really spearheading these efforts and partnership. And I know my colleague, Councilmember Vince Sarmiento, has been very active, as now he sits on the Board of the National Association of Latino Elected Officials, which is Naleo, as I was a former past president. And that's one of our goals, is pushing and making sure that we get to move forward and helping those become citizens here in the United States. So every anniversary of the Constitution provides a historic opportunity for all Americans to learn about and to reflect upon the rights and privileges of citizenship and its responsibilities. So before I pass the microphone to Mayor Polito as he presents, I would love for someone from Accord to just highlight some of the things that you all have done in Santa Ana and throughout the region, and what you all will continue to do moving forward.
I first of all like to thank you all for recognizing Accord and also the importance of the citizenship work. Santana has been a stalwart supporter of Accord all along, to the camera. You know, Orange County has over 170-plus thousand folks who are eligible to become citizens but have not for one reason or the other. So Accord's job, Accord's role, Accord's hope and aspiration is to help as many people as possible to become citizens so that our democracy can thrive and blossom in Orange County. Regrettably, despite of us being the largest service provider in this business, we haven't done a whole lot. We had done only 6,000 or so new citizens over the course of last few years. There are 170,000 folks who are eligible. The people who we have served, more than half of them happens to be from your city, from Santana. And I, as an Executive Director, take great pride in our partnership with the city of Santana all along, not just recently. And I must give a big shout out to Councilmember Vicente Sarmiento for sponsoring the last event that we did in the month of August. But I'm sure my colleague, Andres Rivera, who heads the citizenship program, might be able to give more stats and more important information than I can. Would you?
Thank you. Thank you to the city, a special thanks to the city, and super very special thanks to Councilmember Vincent Sarmiento, to Julie, who was very helpful during the citizenship fair that we had on August 18, where we actually assisted 150 residents in applying for citizenship in the process, which is a very difficult process for a lot of our residents. It's a lot of information. The application's 20 pages long. The cost is $725, so you can imagine, do we pay rent or do we feed our families? And so we assist in providing this service to the community. And we invite Santa Ana residents, we invite the city, to participate and to take the initiative to join us on September 29 at the Anaheim Convention Center, where we're having a mega citizenship fair with the city. There's also going to be a health fair there. So I invite Santa Ana residents, I invite the City Council to step up and join our efforts there. Like Shaquille said, more than half of our applicants, even if they go to the Anaheim Citizenship Fair, are from Santa Ana. So we invite you all. Thank you for this recognition. God bless you.
Thank you. If you can all just please step forward here. I want to give you this proclamation, recognizing Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, the work that you do, making every citizen, native born or foreign born, reflecting on the rights and responsibilities under the Constitution. Also, the importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions, principles, meaning of the Constitution, so they may support, preserve, and defend it against any encroachment. And now, you know, therefore, we're declaring this day, the 17th of September, as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day. So with that, and we have Councilmember Vince Sarmiento here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank Councilmember Mayor Potem Martinez and everybody on staff who's helped with this effort, and thank you all. Good to see you, my friend. We, you know, just hosted a very important citizenship fair at the Salgado Center for the first time. So we had one, I believe it was during the last election cycle at the Southwest Senior Center, was very, very successful. We had about 800 folks show up. People were standing in the rain. It was that important of an issue. So as we see election cycles come and go, we see that voters are getting more engaged. And I want to especially give a shout out to our clerk, Maria Huizar, who has been helping us get the word out. Because as we know, we have about 100,000 registered voters here in the city, and many of our residents don't get out to the percentages that we'd like. So to the extent we encourage new voters to enter into that voter pool, it's important because we're, you know, deciding their fate. Their votes help us get resources from both Washington and Sacramento. So I just want to encourage everybody out there. I know there's a big one that's going to be held in Anaheim, right? At the Convention Center. So we're participating in that, and hopefully, we're going to be feeding a lot of our folks who weren't able to be attended and assisted in Santa Ana to go to Anaheim. So to the extent we can all pass the word along and just continue to encourage folks to not only vote, but those that are eligible to become voters, to get themselves processed and naturalized. We know the fees have been raised, but it's really important that we all do that. So thank you all very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Is the Consul Monica Ochoa here? So next, we are going to do a proclamation in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. And so this is my last one as a council member, and I've been doing this for 12 years. And it's been a tremendous honor to really celebrate really the culture, the accomplishments of the Latino community, not just here in Santa Ana, but across the United States. And we've had a very great partnership with the Mexican consulate office, which is just here in Santa Ana and represents all of Orange County. And so we've been very fortunate. I've gone through four different Mexican consulates here in Santana in my term as a council member here. And I have to tell you that each of those Mexican councils have been amazing partners to Santana. And I wanted to recognize them in particular, and this moment in time, as what we face across this country. And I recently just got, I actually just got back yesterday from Miami and had the opportunity to tour Little Havana. And as I was there, and I toured there for about three and a half hours, to see the pride that that community has and has had for decades. It's a massive history, in particular, in Little Havana and in Miami, with the Cubans. And here, as we look in Southern California, and you look here in a city like Santa Ana, we sometimes get shy to recognize the Latino community. Santa Ana is 80% Latino. We should be proud. I saw artists, I saw business people, and thousands, thousands of people touring Little Havana and wanting to celebrate the Cuban-American culture. So we should not be scared, or intimidated, or shy away from this great community where 80% is Latino. And so it's always been with great pride, and in particular, the Mexican community here in Santana. And I'm not from Michoacan. I'm four generations born here in the United States. But my colleague, Jose Solorio, there's a lot of people from Michoacan, our mayor. I think all, everyone, an exception for Councilman Sarmiento, because he's from Bolivia. But we accept him as a... Yeah, his kids are Mexican. You know, the pride, and we just had Fiesta Spatias. And I didn't have the opportunity to attend, but when you go through that festivity and that parade, you have that sense of pride and culture. And that's the partnership that we have had, year in and year out, with the Mexican consulates and the various organizations that have participated within the parade. And so it's with great pride, great pride to really just honor the Latino community on Hispanic Heritage Month. And I just wanted to share a couple of the words, but before I do, si quieres decir unas palabras, lo puedes decir en inglés or en español, como tú quieres. Okay? Okay.
Muchísimas gracias. Muy buenas tardes. Es un honor y un privilegio para mí estar el día de hoy aquí ante el Consejo de la Ciudad de Santana. Muchísimas gracias por este reconocimiento que hacen al consulado. Sin duda alguna, este es el mes de la hispanidad, que sin duda estamos todos celebrando. Es un honor para nosotros colaborar con socios estratégicos. Sin duda que todos los miembros del Consejo son claves en esta estrategia de apoyo y a la comunidad aquí en el condado, no solamente la mexicana. Estamos uniéndonos para servir a toda la comunidad latina y a cualquier miembro de la comunidad aquí en esta maravillosa ciudad de Santana. Agradecemos muchísimo este reconocimiento. Y este es, me les transmito el agradecimiento del Consul Mario Cuevas Zamora, quien lamentablemente no nos pudo acompañar el día de hoy, pero que sin duda les agradece este reconocimiento. Y sobre todo, me pidió transmitirles el compromiso tanto del consulado como de todo ese equipo, de continuar colaborando con todos ustedes, con la comunidad, para mejor servir a todos ustedes. Muchísimas gracias.
We don't have a translator, and obviously, I can't translate that.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay. The mayor can, though.
I'm sorry.
No, it's, or Vince?
No, the message was very sincere and very heartfelt on behalf of everybody at the Mexican consulate's office. You know, she's just saying how important the relationship has been over the years between the city and the Mexican consulate that's here, housed in Santa Ana. So it's a very important thing. And she says how integral each and every council member has been to that relationship, and how deeply connected we are because we serve the same constituency. So on behalf of the consulate, she's just thanking us for the recognition and for the hard work that we all do as both agencies collaborate together. Muchas gracias.
Great. And we could have the whole council come down so we can take this picture, as I do the whereas. So whereas the National Hispanic Heritage Month serves as a time to recognize, honor, and celebrate the significant contributions of the Hispanic community that is made up of commercial, cultural, educational communities in the United States, and whereas the Hispanic-American community is made up of hard-working entrepreneurs, public servants, elected officials who are working diligently to improve the quality of life and the nation as a whole. And whereas Hispanic-Americans are among the fastest-growing ethnic community in the United States, the presence of this community is vital to the growth and stability of our city and nation. And now, therefore, we, the mayor, and the entire City Council do hereby recognize September 15 through October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month. Great.
Bring it down. Madam City Attorney, is there anything to report out?
Mayor, in the litigation items this evening, the City Council gave direction to staff, and we have no reportable action.
Thank you. So with that, I'm going to go to the consent counter. But before taking up items, we do have an item that a member of the public wishes to speak. So Gabriela Gonzalez, Casa de Familia, you want to speak on 29A? Come on down.
Good evening. I'm Gabriela Gonzalez with Casa de Familia. We're a nonprofit here in Santana, providing mental health services throughout all of Orange County for the past two decades. And 29A was a line item for community support. And I think I'm going to speak in the future about some events that we're hosting for next month, for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We just wanted to make the council aware that we're hosting a series of activities to highlight and provide information and resources to our community on domestic violence next month. And we're in partnership with the Santa Ana Public Library, and just seeking your support. I think we've sent some information your way, so just a heads up that you guys look out for that. And I have some flyers. Everything's online. It's on our website. And, sorry, I can share the rest of the information later, right? Is that correct? Okay, just on 29A. Okay, that was just it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, items that members want to pull? Mayor Potem Martinez?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, 22A, 25A, 25D, 25F, 25G, 25H, 25I, and 25J.
Any... 25C?
I should have just said the entire.
Well, no, you should have said what you don't want to pull.
Oh, and Mr. Mayor, I'm actually a no vote, so we don't have to pull that. But I'm not sure if others are going to vote on this. This is 25J, which is the purchase agreement of real property, acquisition of Warner. I'm a no vote.
All right. And then we have one item by Councilmember Sarmiento. Was that 25C?
C is the count.
And Councilmember Flora?
I had that same item.
25C as well? All right. So I would entertain a motion on the balance.
So move.
Second.
Those in favor, will you say aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries, Councilmember Benavides?
Was D, was 25D, one of the items?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to pull it also?
She's got it. She's got it.
She's already got it. When is enough? All right. All right, let's go ahead. Madam Clerk, you got them all? All right, let's go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll just be very brief on 22A, which is a contract to award for fire alarm systems maintenance. I would just ask if someone very quickly from Public Works can come up, and maybe more towards finance and economic development as we move towards. You know, we've talked about this in the past every time we're doing contracts. I see here the vendor, no vendor from Santa Ana. And I know we have a lot of these companies like this in our city. And so what are we doing to help communicate with them when we have these opportunities? And so I'll be supporting this item, but I know we have a lot of new directors. And the City Council has spoken on several occasions. As we look at business-to-business, it's a huge percent of revenue that comes in back to our city. And, you know, here we have an opportunity to participate. And most times, we're entering into contracts and awarding these contracts. Rarely do we see Santa Ana companies. And so it's important for us to figure out ways of what we're doing to making sure that we are helping the small businesses here in our community. We've gone through several iterations of resolutions and ordinances, have worked with our finance department, with our planning department, and our economic development department, and just wanting to make sure that we can circle back around and what, again, are the next steps? And what are we doing to help really get the word out to these small businesses? They may not be aware that these opportunities exist. And because no one from Santa Ana even applied. As I reviewed the memo, an outreach, zero from Santa Ana. So that right there, again, is a red flag, Mr. City Manager, just wanting to make sure we do everything that we possibly can to get that word out.
We will do that. Madam Mayor Potem.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
And just very quickly as well, I'll make a motion to approve. And this is in agreement with Basic HR Services for tracking system for employee leaves of absences. And so I just, one, I want to thank our HR director. Thank you so very much for moving us into the 21st century. I really appreciate it. For years, we've been talking about our payroll system, about tracking systems, and how, you know, we can integrate those to really be more innovative and efficient, you know. And we have yet to get there until you've come along, so I want to thank you. I've been seeing these items on the agenda and just want to personally thank you for helping us get to the 21st century. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll move aside.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Yes. And this is for our police department. And I'm not sure if Chief Valentin or another member of our police department, but maybe someone else could actually help us out with this. We move forward with outsourcing our parking enforcement services. And I wanted to see if there is a report of how they've been doing, you know, since we have moved over with this company. You know, there are complaints at times. And the way I look at it, whether you're a contractor or a city employee, residents or the business community doesn't care. You know, when you're associated with Santa Ana, they can care less if you're a contractor or an employee. And so as we continue to move forward in streamlining our services and contracting, you know, for parking enforcement services, I just want to make sure that if we can get maybe a one-page or two-page memo on their services and what they've been provided, and really, what have they done up to, you know, I think the past year and a half to two years as it pertains to, you know, tickets, how they've been responsive to the public? Because there are times when I've received tickets, you know, here in the city, and you're running in last minute, and sometimes, you know, you're wondering like, why are these folks coming here so quickly to ticket me? And I hear it time and time again in our downtown, and wanting to make sure that these folks represent the city in the best fashion as possible, and I'm not saying that they are not. But it would be great to get a highlight of some of their accomplishments. Who are those folks that in particular are in our downtown? I think that's probably some of the more sensitivity of these parking enforcement that we see, this service company that's out there in the downtown. Would be greatly appreciated, Chief Valentin. And with that, I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
And Councilmember Benavides?
A comment, Mr. Mayor, for the police chief and city manager well, because I would echo some of the comments that Mayor Potem has made with regard to any individual that is out providing service in the community, ultimately is a reflection on the city. And quality customer service is paramount, should be paramount, should be. They should represent us well. I've also have been made aware of certain instances where perhaps parking, park enforcement was perhaps a bit overzealous, in particular on the downtown area. And as an example, where I know what they're looking to, at least from what I understand, what they're looking to enforce specifically, parking in the downtown, meters that have gone over or people parking illegally and such. On a couple of incidents, one in particular, there was a citation that was given for a meter that had been overrun. There's been a few incidences. But then it seemed like they took the opportunity to look at other, I think, expired registration, which is granted. It's, you know, that needs to be corrected, needs to be corrected. And no license plate on the front, you know, front, no license, no front license plate. So again, things that should and should be corrected. However, so I'm not saying that the citation, the person wasn't, maybe didn't merit a citation. What I'm saying is just particularly in our areas that are destination areas where we want to invite visitors, you know, it's something where we do have to weigh out. You know, what is the appropriate level of, how focused should we be on just trying to rack up citations versus, you know, addressing the parking situation? Maybe allowing for, you know, patrol officer or something if there is a situation where a patrol officer comes across that situation, that vehicle, they do the appropriate action to be able to take care of these other, you know, citations. At the end of the day, those, they do end up racking up. And it just ultimately gives a negative experience for the visitors. And that's, we don't want that, especially for downtown. So customer service and just having clear direction to the parking enforcement, particularly the downtown folks, what they should be enforcing.
Councilor Solorio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too agree with getting more reporting data on a regular basis. We do get a lot of complaints about parking tickets, but also lack of parking. I got another constituent letter as we speak about that. So I like the idea of reports. But I do want to say that I want to compliment the staff for adding what I think are one or two new features in this contract. Number one, to encourage really what our local hires, which is good. And as we continue to do more local hires with things from our cannabis industry to this and our community workforce and labor agreement, let's figure out how we could package up all these local hire programs so that as we do reporting, we're, you know, doing one report rather than multiple reports. But that's a very good feature. That the second good feature that was added to this contract was encouraging the company, really more than encouraging, I think requiring the company to do more public outreach so that when there are community fairs or other events, that there's that interaction with the public. So I think that is very good, because I think in our town, there's some folks that don't like when the parking enforcement comes too quick. And there's others that don't like it when they come too late or not at all. So that communication and reporting is very important. So I wanted to thank staff for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So I believe we have... So I believe we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye those opposed? Motion carries. Now I want to go back to 25C, because Councilor Vince Armento had pulled it, and we were going so fast, we skipped it. So let's go to 25C.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't even notice you guys went past that, but I'm glad you're keeping track of things. So I just had a question for staff. I know that this is the interim homeless shelter that is going to be city operated, and we are going to be using funding from the Inclusionary Housing Fund source. And I recall that the initial conversations that we had, at least the way I understood them, is that these funds were eventually going to be replenished. So I just want to make sure, you know, there isn't any mention of that in the RFCA, so in the staff report provided to us. But maybe now that we're here, is, are there any thoughts from staff, Mr. City Manager yourself, or anybody else, of how we can try to replenish those, you know, that funding source? And we understand this is obviously a very important objective that we're trying to achieve, but we also understand that the funds where these monies are coming from are equally important. So to the extent that we can maybe troubleshoot that now, or at least come up with some options as to what we might be able to look at, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Councilor Armento. Yes, absolutely. We don't have currently a replenishment plan. What we have is some general guidelines in terms of trying to find ways to offset using that funding when other revenues come onboard. But we'll come back and report to you on some ideas. I mean, I know one of the thoughts is the sale of city-owned property where the revenue can normally be attributed to the general fund. We can use that money because it's fully discretionary to replenish these funds here. So we'll come back to you with some options.
And, you know, I don't want to hold up this item, because I know how vital it is, how important it is that we pursue it. And we did identify a source. It is a precious source as well. And from what I understand, once we use the monies that are dedicated for the first year of the shelter, it's going to exhaust the funds that we have in the loop, because the other half has already been spoken for through a procurement process that we're going through right now. So we'll probably, you know, spend everything that's in there. So it is very, very valuable to us, because that's the source that we use to try to augment and work with our affordable housing partners and developers that develop housing for our families. So to the extent that you can come back with some options for us and let us know what ways we can reimburse this fund, you know, I'll take you and your staff.
I make a motion to approve with a friendly amendment, as Councilor Armento said, if we can please look at providing a policy in regards to any property that is being sold. I know we have some stuff on the books here today of city-owned property. Those revenues go to fill that gap, and as well, we do have a crisis, a safety crisis, emergency with homelessness. How can we use some of our revenue from our reserves or one-time funds to help as well to augment the rest of the balance? If you can come with those two options and what the law says, it'd be great.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I'll take that as a, I'll accept the friendly amendment. The only caveat to that would, I think the funding source or accessing funding from the reserve policy would take two-thirds majority of the vote. So that would be the only difference between the two sources that Mayor Portem mentioned.
Okay, we have more comment. Councilor Solorio?
Yes, thank you. First, starting with that, I think this item is really more the agreement with the service provider, so I don't know how germane the funding source items are, but I appreciate that the direction being sought. My comments are, number one, I'm thankful that the staff found a local Santa Ana-based provider, Mercy House Two, operate the shelter. They've been in here in Santa Ana a long time, great credentials, great service, great character, et cetera. Also, the type of model they are proposing are like the bridges at Kramer, where, you know, homeless can't walk there or walk out. It's largely based on appointment and shuttling, so I think that's good. They also have a good neighbor policy and some other very good items in the proposal, as well as staff did, you know, ask at least a couple of vendors for bids, and Mercy House came in with a very good price. So I think that is excellent. The only thing that I want to ensure is that the staff communicates very clearly with them, that we want them to explore a number of properties that may be used for this emergency shelter, because, you know, I know that irregardless of what place we choose, there are going to be some criticisms. And so to the extent that there has been some good due diligence by the service provider in looking at a variety of options in terms of location, costs, ability to serve the constituents, that would be appreciated. Thank you so much.
All right, so with that, I will leave you with a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye those opposed? Motion carries. Councilor Martinez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item is 25F, and I'll just be very quick. We are moving forward with our, one of our active transportation grants to put, you know, on Lincoln Avenue a pedestrian pathway. I know this is something in that neighborhood that they've been wanting to see, and so it's finally here with the state grants. It takes time for us to go through a process, sometimes for a year to a year and a half, sometimes even two, but we're finally here and just wanting to thank our staff for their due diligence and continuing to move us in the right direction to providing opportunities for pedestrians to move in a safe manner. And with that, Mr. Mayor, move the item.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is 25G, and this is for our chief. Chief, here we're approving agreement with Westbound Communications, the Radio See Emergency Preparedness, and if you see something, say something, public awareness campaign. I just wanted to make sure as we move forward, and I know this is with some of our UAWC funds, that we get the right messaging and making sure that it's translated in various English and not only just Spanish, Vietnamese within specifically this community. And is this funding for Santa Ana, or is it also for Anaheim?
It's also for Anaheim, the operational area.
So will both entities be working together on the messaging with the consultant, or how is that going to play out?
It's a universal messaging platform that all contributing agencies access, but the language issue, I hear you loud and clear, and we'll take care of that as well.
Okay, fantastic. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Appreciate that. And with that, I'll move this item.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is 25H. So this is another one for you, chief. I had a very quick question in regards to spill response and storm drain facility. I know there's an increase on that within your police, within the jail in regards to sewer insanitation. It's approval with Ocean Blue Environmental Services.
Okay.
So we have one full-on contract, and I'm not sure if someone from Public Works can actually help them, but there's been an increase with your budget as it pertains to this issue in regards to the jail, wanting to know what, why the increase.
So I do not have the response to that at the moment, but I certainly can get it. So specifically, the increase in allocation for the...
Obviously, there's some spills, and I think you've had many. Is it because we have more population in the jail, or do we have some pipe breakage?
We do have some deferred maintenance that we are addressing, that I am well aware of. We do have increased population. We're hovering at about four to 425, up from about 125 about a year ago. But we do have some significant deferred maintenance that we are addressing. You caught me a little off guard with the whole spillage and public works.
Yeah, no worries.
That's why I turned to my left.
I didn't want to say something in a negative way, because you could actually understand me, so I said spillage, but yes.
Did you have anything more to that?
One second.
In regards to the jail council member, we're just making sure that we properly clean up any biohazards that occur within the cells, primarily in the drunk cell. If there's any accidents or anything like that, it's properly cleaned up within the jail, and we've been using it more for that reason.
Great, thank you. And that was just my question, was just like, why is there such a huge increase? But thank you for the clarification. With that, I'll move the item forward.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. The next item, again, is just wanting to thank our HR Department for moving us forward and looking at some payroll practices, as I talked about earlier in the other item. This is moving forward with an agreement to look at payroll best practices. For far too long, I have said this on this council, and with our former executive director in HR, that we need to move towards the 21st century when we're doing things by hand or trickled, you know, still in the 18th and 19th century. That's not innovative, it's not efficient in the use of the time of your personnel in HR, and how do we integrate these systems? And so I'm finally excited to see this department moving towards a direction that it needs to go into, so that we can make sure that we are in compliance with CalPERS, that we're in, and I think that's very important from a payroll perspective, and making sure that we're calculating things the appropriate way, so that we're having to deal with our pensions and CalPERS system, that that is a seamless process, because we've had problems in the past. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll move this item.
Those in favor, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And the last item, Mr. Mayor, is 25J, which is to approve purchase agreement of real property acquisition on East Warner. And for the record, I've been a no on Warner, so...
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye those opposed? Motion carries. Madam City Clerk, do we have a no?
Yes, we do.
Please go ahead.
If I can have Daniel De La Cruz come to the front, please.
And why don't you take the mic and bring it down?
And Mr. De La Cruz has just been appointed to the Youth Commission as the Ward One alternate representative.
I soundly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, that I will, will well, and faithfully discharge the duties in which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
He's gone. He's gone. He doesn't want any more of this.
Congratulations.
With that, let's go on to the next item. I think that would be 55A. I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye those opposed? Motion carries. 55B, entertain a motion as well.
So move.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye those opposed? Motion carries. 75A, this is a public hearing, a hold as legal required, a public hearing, and we're going to be talking potential boundaries, communities of interest to consider and new I'm not sure how much we need, other than I want to open up the public hearing. Do we have any members that wish to address us? Any cards?
We do have a presentation from our consultant.
Okay, let's get a translator, and let's do a brief presentation by the consultant. We had one earlier, and then we'll take comment when we close the public hearing. Go ahead, please.
For any who have not been to one of these presentations, I know the council members have been to several of these so far. I'm going to go through some of the basics about what it is we're doing and talk a little bit about what we've heard from the community so far in our public hearings. So as we draw districts for the city of Santa Ana, we're going to follow some traditional redistricting principles. To go over them rather quickly, the first is going to be that each district is going to be relatively equal size. And when we look at equal size, we're going to be looking at drawing districts that have equal population per the most recent decennial census. Approximately each district will be 325,000 people, or the city as a whole is 325,000 people. Approximately each district will be between 52,000 to 55,000 people. Districts are going to be contiguous, meaning that they're going to be whole parts, they're not going to skip and jump around the city. They're going to maintain communities of interest, and we've been doing a lot of discussion about this at the outreach meetings, and going over two different types of communities of interest. The first type of communities of interest have to do with those protected classes. And when we look at those, we're looking at ethnic, religious, and other nationalities as protected communities of interests. When we look at these communities of interest, specifically looking at Latinos and Asians, we're looking at the citizen voting age population of these different groups. And in the public presentation, we've been talking in depth about where these populations are, and looking at maps like these that show, as an example, a very dense Latino population in one portion of the city, and a rather dense Asian population in another portion of the city. We've also been talking about additional communities of interest, because as we draw lines, we cannot only consider race, we have to consider other criteria. And a lot of these other criteria are really the conversations that we have in these public meetings, they're the things that the community comes forward with. In some of the very first meetings that we had, we had people talking about neighborhoods. And in the following subsequent hearings, we've heard people talk about education, income levels, and homeowners versus renters. Another thing that we'll look at is following existing city and county governmental lines. And then finally, keeping districts compact, making sure that they're not awkward-shaped, long, serpent-like, and more square and circle-like. When we look at the current districts, we can see we have six districts that meet that first criteria of being equal population. However, there are concerns about the way in which they interact with the other communities of interest as we've gone through these. And one of the main communities of interest, as I mentioned, was the neighborhoods. Each of the maps that are in the entryway look at the districts that have been proposed and have the overlays of those neighborhoods as one of the key criteria in how we draw these. We've provided data that have been in packets and the public has, looking at specifically each of these neighborhoods and their Latino and Asian composition as a way of using these neighborhoods as kind of a proxy for those communities. We've also looked at the overlapping political geographies, and the one that really has stood out the most has been this map showing the school districts. I don't know about the council members and the public that's here, but I've always associated myself with where I went to school. And that is a key kind of way of how we grow up and think about ourselves and how we think about our community. And in this instance, the Garden Grove Unified School District to the west of the Santa Ana River does provide a boundary that you'll see in, coming up in some of the plan drafts. Another thing that we've seen is in the congressional district lines, there appears to have been an attempt in these lines to draw a district that maximized the Latino representation of the 46th Congressional District and the Asian composition of the 48th Congressional District, again, pulling from some of that population on the other side of the Santa Ana River. When we look at the lines that have been drafted, we see several sets of data that we want to make sure that the public is aware of and can look at in a way to determine how effective these districts are. The first one is how... The first one is how well we draw districts that are relatively equal size. The second one would be to look at these ethnic populations with a specific attention to the composition of the one district that would be drawn and have the greatest potential for electing a candidate of choice from the API Asian community, specifically the Vietnamese population of the city. We have four plans that have been drafted. Each of them seek to address these concerns and balance these different criteria in our redistricting in different ways. One Plan A essentially starts with the basis of the existing boundaries, but then attempts to draw a district that also incorporates the need for a district that maximizes the ability for the Asian community to elect a candidate of choice and also preserves the neighborhood boundaries. A different version of this plan, and to mention in Plan A, that Asian citizen voting age population in the lower left-hand corner of this data table achieves a 43% Asian district in Plan A, in District A in Plan A. Plan B does a little bit different in terms of how it draws these seats and incorporates an additional northern portion of that District A connection to the Garden Grove Unified School District, and it rearranges how the districts are built in the core of the city as well. The traditional districts have had one district along the top, and this splits that up in this Plan B version. Plan C attempts to look at the fact that we have an Asian population that's to the far southwest of the city and whether or not that could be bridged to the other portions of the city that have high Asian population. This did come up in the public testimony in that there are two neighborhoods that are adjacent to each other that end up getting split in this plan. And so there was some, you know, strong pushback to that element and some input put into the website regarding that. And then finally, Plan D is the plan that the plaintiffs asked us to spend a little bit extra attention to, and it does most follow the Garden Grove Unified School District boundaries in order to create a District A that is, it comes in at 44% Asian. This district also still needs some adjusting, it has a lot of room for adjusting, in order to get the equal population number, but it does meet a lot of the other criteria in terms of trying to keep neighborhoods unified and so on. Each of these plans are out in the entryway, and I've also provided some additional data to the city that's been being put up on the website. One piece of data asked for by the, in the community meetings was, would we provide not just the citizen voting age population, but also the simply voting age population and also the estimated new population regardless of citizenship or age? So we've provided some additional data tables that have been put up on the website. We've also done some additional mapping of the income and renter data. Is that, do you think, in this other one? Yeah. It looks like the same as what we just did. That will be up on the website, I'm sure. Some other, it was an additional version of this plan that we'll put up on the website. But, and I also have been talking with some of the community members that are here about it, but essentially what we do have in looking at renters is there's a core low-income renter population kind of in the middle of the city. There are actually some high numbers of renters in the southern portion of the city, near South Coast Plaza area, but those are high density of renters, but also high income populations. So part of the balancing is, in that Plan D, there is a District C that incorporates a lot of the renter population and a lot of the low-income population. And part of the concern within the community groups that are going to be, you know, interacting either on the website or at these public hearings, is how best to address those communities and maximize their ability to elect a candidate of choice, but to not pack them all into one district, to not create a district that's 95% renters, instead to create districts where those renters can influence the outcome of elections in more than one seat. So there's going to be some balances with that income and renter versus homeowner elements of the final plan, I would expect. And going forward, we have, I believe, three more hearings that are all going to be here. We have conducted several meetings in the community, even on weekends and evenings and mornings, in order to allow for the maximum amount of input. We have had dozens of people at each of these hearings, which has been great turnout in my experience. One thing to really note is that based on the schedule that we're on and talking to the attorney, we are in a situation where we're planning on having a final plan adopted by the November, at the November 20th meeting. The prior, the meeting prior to the November 20th meeting would be the October 30th meeting. In order to have a final plan that can be adopted on the November 20th hearing, it has to be public for that October 30th meeting, which means that it has to be finalized by October 23rd. So we're essentially on a schedule of having three more meetings, but by October, by October 23rd, we really have to have whatever's going to be the eventual plan drafted and made available for the public. So that's essentially where we're at with the schedule. If there aren't any other questions, I think we might have some public testimony.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any members of the audience that wish to address us. We have one, Rick Sarvui Velasquez.
Mi nombre es Rubi Velasquez. Soy líder de OCO y con Movimiento y MAGMA. Soy residente de la ciudad de Santa Ana por seis años. El motivo por el cual estoy aquí es porque en nuestra ciudad de Santa Ana necesitamos mejorar nuestra democracia y respetar el derecho de los votantes y de la comunidad más vulnerable sin importar grupos étnicos. Por lo cual estoy aquí para apoyar el mapa Plan D de distrito, un mapa mucho más, un mapa donde todos los niveles sociales se sientan incluidos en su comunidad como votantes. Muchas gracias, Dios los bendiga.
Good evening. My name is Rubi Velasquez. I'm a leader with OCO and with Movimiento y MAGMA. I'm a resident of the city of Santa Ana for six years, and I'm here because our city, our city of Santa Ana, we need to improve democracy and respect the rights of the voters of this community, the most vulnerable community regardless of ethnic groups. This is why I'm here to support MAP Plan D for the district, redistricting Plan D, a map where all socioeconomic levels feel included in their own community as an elective community. Thank you very much and God bless.
Quick question, can you clarify?
Go ahead.
No, if I heard right, is it D like?
D S and David, Plan D, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Gracias, thank you. So with that, let me bring back Councilor Solario. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilor Solario.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I do want to thank the staff and the consultant for, in quick order, getting communications out and holding these meetings and scheduling, you know, rooms and translators and all that. I know it was a lot in short order, so I'm thankful for that. I did go to a recent workshop at the Delhi Center, and they had, you know, modest but good turnout, and by having a variety of these different meetings and hearings throughout the city, it is getting folks from different neighborhoods to participate, so that is very good. I know for today's meeting, a lot of the focus is on communities of interest. I wanted to share what some of my priorities are. Number one, we've had, you know, a pretty good neighborhood movement in Santa Ana for some decades, and so to the extent that we can respect those, neighborhood association lines, I think that's of very high importance because they communicate and meet, interact according to those boundaries. Second, you know, being a representative of Ward Three and knowing the communities of interest in that ward, you know, very clearly 17th Street is an important boundary, and I do want to see, you know, maps that keep those communities intact north of 17th Street. Second, you know, we're here in large part because of the diversity of our city and our Vietnamese and Asian-American community, most of which lives on the west side of town. But I do like options like Plan D where some of the boundaries for the heavier Asian ward would include neighborhoods that are east of the river, because too often there's a division of who's west and east of the river, you know, who's in San Unified versus Garden Grove Unified. So to the extent that we have boundaries that encourage coordination and discussion on both sides, I think that would be helpful, as well as, you know, I don't want to compact all the Asian-American residents in a very small area. I do want to see some, you know, a broader area that's more inclusive of that broader Asian community, so those are my thoughts for today. Thank you.
I do have some additional comment, may I present?
Yes, Councilman Benavides.
Thank you. For our consultant, I think he's still here, there was some mention about, I'll mention a few of the comments, but then mainly some questions. One is that there were some neighborhood associations that had expressed concern about potentially being divided. I'm curious if you, I think you had mentioned two in particular, I'm curious if you could, if you recalled though, who those, which those were, which those were.
The North and South, I forget the name of the neighborhood association.
And we can come back, you said some of that information is going to be on the website, the comments?
Yes.
Yeah, it is, there is a comment there. It's in that handout, the last comment.
Okay.
In the handout that was.
Okay, I'll look.
Comment number seven, I think.
Madam Clerk, if that's something you can provide in the future. The other, I guess one of that, before I get to some of my additional comments, is the timeline, that more critical just understanding, you'd mentioned the October 23rd date.
Yeah.
Which is four weeks or so out, right? So we've had a few of these meetings where, a couple of public hearings here, second public hearing here, in addition to other meetings we had prior to even this scenario, right? This go-around, a few public meetings out in the community. At this point, we're still looking at some of the, the same four proposed plans that you had initially put together. So at what point and how will we go about getting to a finalized, basically the modification? You mentioned Plan D, for example, there was a comment, additional question about Plan D, but there was at least one speaker today who seemed to favor Plan D. I'm not sure if there were other, other plans favored or mentioned in some of the community meetings. But as you're gathering this information, getting feedback both from council, community members, what is the process going to be to synthesize that and to say, based on what we've heard, we've modified, you know, plans, you know, X, Y, Z to be, or, you know, two of them, or whatever the case might be, to be what is kind of rising to the top as far as the addressing the questions, concerns, ideas that are presented?
Absolutely.
Are we going to get that from you? Is that something we're going to do, or, and what's the timeline for that?
To answer the first question, it was Windsor Village. Windsor Village, I guess there's a North and a South Windsor Village, and one of the plans, it splits that, so there was definitely some comments about that. We've also had other individuals from different neighborhood groups come up and talk to me and ask me about specific things for those neighborhoods. So clearly, the neighborhoods have been something that have been at the fore this whole time. The timeline is something that you definitely want to talk with your attorney about, but as I understand it, the agreement that you have set out a number of meetings and the structure of those meetings ending with November 20th, and that November 20th would be the meeting that presumably you would adopt the final plan at. In order to have a final plan adopted under the state law and under the agreement, I believe, too, it needs to be made public for two meetings. And in order to be made public for two meetings, the meeting preceding that November 20th is October 30th. So in order to be public for two meetings, it would have to be created by October 23rd. I just wanted to mention that because it was a conversation that was at the last public hearing in order for the community and for you to understand kind of where we're at in terms of the timeline. How we go from one of the existing plans to a final plan is really up to the council and also to what input we get from the community groups. As an example, earlier tonight, one of the rather organized community groups asked me about if they could get, you know, the shape files and they could propose actual adjustments to, and I think they were discussing potentially, adjustments to Plan D. If you or community groups provide input that says, we want to do Plan A, B, C, or D, but we want to make these three alterations, then that essentially gets put on my plate to draw those and to come back to the council with, you know, how those plans could work given the input that we might have received from the council and from the public. So it can be an iterative process. The best thing really is to have the public or the council members make those kind of suggestions. In order for those suggestions to be on a final plan by, you know, the October 23rd date, we need to start, you know, essentially we have a month for that.
Right, so, well, thanks for that input, and I would go back to the clerk to help us figure out, you know, because at this point, we're getting verbal feedback and understand that if there is some type of, some type of specific iteration of a plan sent to you, then you would.
Yeah, it would be to go through your city staff to suggest other alternatives, and the same thing for the public. The public has the website, the public can also send in a suggested new file to the city. We discourage people from sending anything directly to me because we want it to be on the record, we want it to go through the staff and the attorneys.
So I think it'll be important for council to get a better, more clear sense for the public as well. It sounds like there are some certain deadlines, and I'm just getting a bit nervous that right now we're getting information, gathering information, but there aren't any variations that are being worked on or presented, so just at one point, will the comments that we're hearing trigger, you know, those suggestions, or trigger those recommendations, those alterations? So I'll work on unwrapping up here, the Plan D, you mentioned, there were some modifications, so it goes to the same question. You had mentioned in your presentation that there would be a need to modify some of the population balances, so is that something that you work on? At what point does that happen?
If we were to, as an example, if somebody were to come forward and say, we want to make these two or three little changes or unify this neighborhood, unify that neighborhood, coming up with some things that they really want to see to make that plan better, in the course of doing that, I would suggest some alterations and present a plan. The final plan would really, really have small deviations in the populations of each district, and any changes that I make from the plan that you have in front of you to a final plan, I would, you know, outline exactly what changes were made.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My last couple of comments. One is that when it, there was a mention earlier about what has been somewhat of a natural boundary on one of the streets. In my mind, that the riverbed has been a natural boundary, I think we should, we can look at so that there is a council, district, or council member, basically, there's two ways to look at the riverbed. The way, one of the ways I see it is that having a council district that is inclusive of all of the west of the river, so that there's somebody who's focused in that area, I think is something that merits us considering. And I would also reiterate some of what you pointed out, is that in a couple of the maps, Map C seems to be very, very dense, smaller in area, very dense, and also happens to be one of the areas where we have more of a working-class, I think, families, and that might be something for us to. might be something for us to, to look at, to try to balance out. I'll leave that as my comments for now, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Just very briefly, I know, you know, this is just a hearing, the approval of this before this council will be coming in October.
So there's, October 16th is the next public hearing, with the, an adjourned regular meeting on October 30th, that will have the first reading of the ordinance. At that meeting is when you will have one map or three maps, or however many maps are being considered, and the final map will be adopted at that council meeting.
And those maps, before coming to the city council, will they be analyzed by our city attorney, by yourself and others, to making sure that we are in compliance with all laws before they come up here? Obviously, when we have community, you know, participating, providing input, providing maps, and then you have this city council that is going to opine and provide their input, there are times where sometimes we bypass certain things and we end up getting political and want certain districts to look a certain way because it's going to benefit one person or another, and we can't move in that direction, we got to do what is right, and it has to be fair balance. And as we move forward, I would ask our city attorney, at what point will those maps be becoming before you to analyze them? Because you will need enough, you're going to need enough time to review those, and will you be reviewing those with a consultant before they come before this council?
So Mayor Protem, we will largely be relying upon our outside special counsel, who you've met and presented to you the issues in closed session, because she is an expert in the CVRA issues generally, and will be interacting, already is working very closely. So the first iterations of these maps that you saw were built in consultation, they're working hand in hand. So in short answer, yes, they will be reviewed by legal counsel to ensure that they are all legally defensible at the end of the day.
And will we be presented with a staff recommendation, or with options for city council to approve? So say there is six maps, and there's a recommendation by the consultant and attorney to recommend three because they're in compliance with the law, is that the process that we will be taking?
Generally, in my experience doing this, I will only provide final plans that are in compliance with the law, and, but I do not make any recommendations as to a final plan. That is up to how you interact with your staff and how this, that's outside of my scope.
I would ask our city attorney, because I think we all know that this issue has been very political, and I have yet to voice my opinion. I have let this process go through, through a democratic process and letting the public participate, but it's unfortunate because we've had very little participation, very little, and it's very disappointing and disingenuous when we sit up here and saying that we want true community participation, when we did this at the last hour. And it's not right, because we should do things the right way, because these are going to have major implications in this city moving forward. And we have yet to even go to the voters, and here we are in this process, that this council will be approving, not the new council. And so it's disturbing for me on many levels, but again, we try to make these assumptions and have these perspectives that we are trying to do right by this community, when at times we are not. And I believe that the way this process has gone down is not appropriate. And so I just wanted to voice that, and I'm hopeful that with professional consultants and our attorney, that we will get a good product, right? The best product that we possibly can get, so that if the voters do support this and approve this, that we move forward in a fashion that we know that it wasn't political, and it was the right, it was the right direction and the right maps that we chose, and then eventually, we will be able to make that decision in the near future, if this isn't, you know, fair or balanced. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I think I had somebody on the left, and then I'll come back. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just really brief. I totally agree 100% with what the Mayor Protem was saying regarding this item, and I want the folks out there to remember that we were not getting sued. Please remember that we were not getting sued until, you know, there's a lot of theories out there about how this came about, when we got served that lawsuit up here a while back. So just keep that in mind. And then, yeah, we're doing this before the November election, doesn't make any sense. And we're also doing it before the census, but those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Tina Hedo, please.
I think that one of the things that we have to recognize and remind ourselves, let me ask you a couple of questions. Have you had any conversations with any of the council members up here regarding your studies?
No, ever since I've been hired by the city, I've had no individual conversations, except to maybe say hello.
Okay. The reason I bring that up is because we talk about political, this has been very apolitical, and we've hired a consultant to do a job, and the consultant has been giving us a report. Mayor Protem, Michelle Martinez voted against Ward elections last time, so it's interesting to me how now it's, they're very passionate about this. The fact is this, is that you're going to give us data. Personally, I rely on the data that the experts give us to make a decision. Ultimately, ultimately, people have to, you know, Mayor Protem, I stayed very quiet while I was listening to you. If you could give me the same courtesy, I'd appreciate it. So my whole thing is this, is that, give us, continue with the report, we're going to make a decision, that's where we are right now. That's where we are right now, and we're going to make the best possible decision based upon the information that you give us. So I tend to stay pretty quiet in most meetings, because I don't want to be out there talking for the sake of talking. I like to get the job done, and we're in a democratic process right now, and everyone has the right to speak, but I just want to make it clear that you have not been in contact with anyone else, that you're doing the job that you're supposed to do, and at the end of the day, we have to make a decision, an ultimate decision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. So with that, we've done everything, the public hearing, the speakers, I'll bring it back to council. We just receive them, or what do we do, Madam Clerk?
There's no action required on this.
No action? Okay, so let's go on to the next item, then, this public hearing for item 75B. It's a public hearing on the mixed-use overlay zone, and we've already had a lot of discussion and comment, made something brief from staff, and then I do have some speakers that, three speakers that want to address this on the item. So maybe you can just summarize briefly the two actions that are before us today.
Thank you, Mayor. The two actions that are before you today, one is the original recommendation that staff provided at the meeting of August 21st.
And that's option one?
That's option one. And then the second option is an option that was developed since the continuance of September 4th. Between that meeting and today, staff was able to take this item to the edebit, and receive some high-level comments regarding some of the concerns that were raised regarding the effectiveness of the edebit as it currently proposed in attracting development that are, you know, being envisioned for the area. So with that, the edebit provided some high-level recommendations that are twofold. The first is to work with the edebit to develop some high-level overarching strategies and goals, and, you know, within the next 30 days, develop that and make some recommendation to the existing MIMU for the city council to consider in early October. So that's on the short term. On the longer terms, to address some of the concerns about whether or not the MIMU has achieved its intended purpose in terms of being a catalyst for development, being, you know, creating economic development for the area, is to work with the edebit to go into a deep dive, you know, in terms of the economic impact analysis, fiscal analysis, even looking at, in potentially increasing the cap for development, so that, you know, that has a longer-term goal. But that would be something that would then be returned back to the council as a whole. So those were the overarching comments that we received at the edebit, and the recommendations are before you as they stand.
Thank you for that. If I may, I want to open it up to the public. I have Howard Hall that wishes to address this, followed by Kathy Decker and Desi Reyes.
Good evening, and thank you. I'm Howard Hall. I've been on the board of directors of the Friends of the Santa Ana Zoo for 26 years now. I'm also an occupant of the Xerox Center Building. My law firm occupies the 10th floor of that building, and I have the benefit of looking down upon the zoo, watching our new Ferris wheel spin around and earn money for the animals. And I also, it gives me a great view of the portal to the city that every attorney that's heading to all the courts goes through on First Street, and it's been such a concern of blight for all these years, from going back from the saddleback to now just the vacant land and all. And I would just, I don't understand all the issues about the larger amendment of the MIMU, representing developers and coming from a family of developer, my father was a developer in Texas, I know there's narrow windows on when you can build. All the financial world has to come together with the demand and the processing, and I understand that's very complicated. It'd be my concern and my one comment is that we want to build this facility, a facility there at the portal for this fine city. We're very proud to call it our home for our business, we'd love to have a hallmark attraction that benefits the zoo, it benefits all the other businesses that are operating within the city. So further delay, I understand that there's a greater goal to be achieved in drawing more out of the MIMU as you go forward, but please don't sacrifice this live one you have on a line with the current developer. They've been very proactive in working with parks. I believe that the 14 points that the parks for the benefit of the zoo had tried to raise, that those have all been resolved. I'll let Kathy Decker speak to that, but they, so far, have been a very good future neighbor for us, and we'd like to see them come in. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Kathy, please, then followed by Desi Reyes.
Hi, Kathy Decker. I've lived most of my life in Santa Ana and worked in Santa Ana at the Santa Ana Zoo. I'm the Friends of Santa Ana Zoo Executive Director, and I have always been a big proponent of anything that goes in that complements the zoo. So we would love to change the name of the street from Elk to Zoo Drive. We'd like to have things that complement the zoo along there, anything that helps with the landscaping, helps with the crosswalk, you know, I always talk about big Jurassic Park doors, something that really helps make that corridor that's special, that when you come to Santa Ana, it's something unique and special. So I know if we could work with the developer and have it something that complements the zoo, something that moves forward, cleans up that area, is safe for our residents and our guests that come to the zoo, I mean, they come from all over, so it's really wonderful to have First Street get all those upgrades and just to be such a nice place. I mean, I lived right across the street from there for many years, and it'd be nice to have all of that. So, so thank you, everybody, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Desi Reyes.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council member, it's been a while, I haven't been here, but I'm still here. I'm city resident, Saddleback View neighborhood, which is adjacent to First Street, that's the south boundary of the neighborhood. But I want to speak here as a resident, that, representing the neighborhood. First Street needs to be developed, and like the gentleman said, there's always a narrow window in the economy, that if you miss it, it could be another 10, 15, 20 years, is this working? Can you hear me? Could be another 15, 20 years before new development is brought into some area like First Street. It's very blighted, there's a lot of hotels there, motels that don't enhance the area at all. And I wanted to bring you back, back when the metro zoning was completed back in '26 or '27, 2006, 2007, there was a big project that was going to come in on the vacant parcel at Fourth Street and the freeway. Well, guess what? 2008 came around, market crashed, nothing's been built since, and that remains a vacant lot, which is blighted. So I'm in support of this metro overlay, and to enhance the zoo, it needs it, I think it's going to improve that area. It's a gateway to the city, and it will bring additional development to the area. We haven't seen much, only 1901, it's been built since this Metro East. It's a nice complex, it has enhanced the area, so I'm looking for, we're looking for other opportunities like that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Seeing no other speakers, I'm going to close the public hearing. So Madam City Attorney, the public hearing is now closed, and I'll bring it back to council for consideration and discussion. Councilmember Aviagos, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, approve item 1A.
Just a little louder, please.
If I can approve item 1A.
You mean item 1A and B, option 1 is what you mean?
Option 1, yes.
Okay. Okay, we have motion of second, discussion. Pardon? Discussion, go ahead, Councilor Vince Armento.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it looks like there'll be votes to adopt option 1A tonight, so I'll speak to my colleagues up here and to those in the public. I don't think anybody is opposed to developing the Metro East Overlay Zone. In fact, we gave direction years ago to expand the existing boundary lines, to go to Grand. It was a natural growth to move west of the 5 freeway. I think we also want to see the Elks property developed, and I know it's held by the Wormer family now. That's clear, we all realize that there's opportunities that we can take advantage of. First Street has been developing, it hasn't just been 1901. We see ground has been broken at the Amcal properties close to First and Grand. We saw that there's the Orchard property along First near Tustin. So First Street has been very active, and that's been a conscious effort on behalf of this council that is mentioned in the governing documents of the housing element and the consolidated plan. The problem is, how do you move forward? And are projects being responsive for the families here in Santa Ana? Or are we creating housing for those outside the city? And so that's the real dilemma. I think there is an opportunity to develop intelligently, and there's an opportunity to just develop. So we can certainly develop and just open our doors and abandon our criteria, abandon our priorities, and abandon our responsibilities to our families here. We have in the city, families living two and three to one unit, two to three families in one unit. If you look at some of the unit mix in the proposed market rate development, I have nothing but respect for the Wormers moving forward, but one bedrooms really aren't going to address the needs that families in Santa Ana need. You know, we have large families, we have families that have three and four children, and where are they going to move to? So we're going to create a lot of market rate housing for folks that are not going to benefit or living in the city. We need, we need a market supply in general, just so it will relieve some of the, some of the demand for housing, but it's the right type of housing that we're looking for. And again, we've already recited those in policy documents that are supposed to govern our decisions. And nobody is saying that we don't need market rate, we just need the developer to work with us. And I know I've had very good conversations with the developer, and he seems like a good man, and he seemed, and they seem like a good team. They've developed a lot of affordable housing in their portfolio. The problem is, is that now, we have rents continuing to increase, families being displaced, and if we're going to feel fine about displacing the families that are here and in their place, having, you know, folks that are, you know, one to a bedroom and in studios, then that's fine. Let's make sure that we, let's make sure that we change our policy document and say that we're going to do that. But I think we do need some time. All that we were suggesting is that we would take this back, study this for 30 days and bring it back. But again, my plea is that when we have a shortage of these, of housing inventory, I just want us to look back at this moment, because this is a 33-acre overlay zone. It's a massive, massive overlay zone. And so this is a departure from what the policy and governing documents have been. So if we're fine with that, that's okay, let's just make sure that our policies and our governing documents reflect that.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Martinez.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could please have staff come up here? I have various questions as it pertains to the MIMU. I have various questions as it pertains to the MIMU and also in particular to this project. Because it was my understanding, what we were going to be discussing today was the overlay zone, not any new project. And so why we're even having this conversation of approving a project while approving an overlay zone? How did we get here? The city council made a recommendation to expand this overlay zone. So how did we get here today with a development project and an expansion of an overlay zone? So I would ask the question that who gave the authority to this staff to allow this developer to pay $150,000 for this EIR that had to do with the MIMU? I want that answer today. I want to know because this city council never gave that authority, it never went to my committee. I would like that answer today. I want to know who did they work with on this staff to make this happen?
My apologies, Madam Mayor Protem. As much as I'd like to give you that answer, as you know, I recently joined the staff, so I don't have that answer. That question has been asked, but no one has come forward with an information.
How does no one know? Ms. Madam City Attorney, I am going to ask you, before this legislative body makes an approval, who gave the authority to a staff member to move forward to accept $150,000 to do an EIR with the MIMU? Who? I know this council did not do it, it didn't come to my committee. I would like to know who gave that authority?
And Madam Mayor Protem, I don't know who did that. If you're asking me to look into that, I can work with the city manager to find out, but I don't know who did that. I will say for the record that the Planning Department does present to the city council a list of qualified EIR consultants. I believe that staff then chooses from those lists, but in terms of how it got financed and who made that, I would have to work with the department under the city manager's approval because I do not have independent authority to investigate, but I could look through it through the city manager's authority.
Look, ladies and gentlemen, this is just very disturbing. And look, they have the votes, fine. I'm gone in five more meetings, that's all you have of me. But this is a huge policy decision that is going to have major implications moving towards in the 21st century. When you have a commercial corridor that is going to be transformed into residential predominantly, possibly 11,000 more additional residents. When we all know financially this city is constrained and everyone is counting, they call it a penny and a half sales tax, but they called it a homeless tax, which we all know it's not a homeless tax. They're counting on that, but the reality is this. We have made many mistakes and we are continuing to move down this path again. And so I'm not going to say anything further. If you have the votes, fantastic, but just let me tell you this, that your preferred future is determined on the policies that you set here today. You're not going to need a crystal ball to know where Santa Ana is five years from today. That's all I'm going to say. I made that very clear to you all in 2008, when the city was moving towards financial insolvency, and I'm going to tell you again that that day is coming.
Thank you. Councilor Solario.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project really started before I joined the council, but I do know it's been in the works for about a couple of years, and folks have known about it, and I know we do have a committee system, but not all items go to committees, and some of us aren't on committees because, you know, a variety of reasons. But we, I think, in looking at that First Street corridor, as a number of the speakers have raised, there have been some issues. There is a lot of blight, there is a lot of crime. We have major assets like the zoo that could benefit. We do need housing in our community, a variety of it, whether it's for individuals, families, low income, market rate, et cetera. We also need economic development. I know we continuously up here talk about doing economic development and doing the highest and best use for some of these vacant or underused parcels, and so this is an opportunity to lift that community up. And I was pleased to see some residents from that area speak in support. I think at some recent council meetings, and we've discussed this a few times, we did ask the staff to fall upon a number of things, and they did respond verbally and in writing. I know I and a few others had questions about the economics of these areas, and there was some initial economic work done. I think there's additional work that needs to be done. But when we look at economic development overall and that land use, the general plan is a good vehicle for that. And so I know I've mentioned that I'd like to see more focus on that as that continues to go through the process, and really that's a better avenue to discuss, you know, the connection of land use with economic development, property taxes, other things as well. So for those reasons, you know, I'm supportive. I know staff has been very involved with this and have been working with possible and potential developers, and, you know, I'm here in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor. So a few comments on this. This is the third time that this item has come before council. And at the last, after the last meeting, we took the opportunity, we had a Economic Development and the EDIBIT meeting, Economic Development. Was it? Yeah, what does I stand for?
EDIBIT, Economic Development, Technology and Infrastructure Committee.
That meeting.
Long Committee. Long Committee, ultimately where it addresses economic development, planning, or land use as well. So we had the Economic Development Committee of the council scheduled. So members of the committee, myself included, asked to be able to have an opportunity to agendize this item so we can discuss further. And I'm one of the members of the council that has expressed that I have had a number of questions. The concept of the Metro East Mixed Use Overlay Zone, of it moving forward, I don't think that anybody is opposed to it, myself included. There was some time back when we were looking at the fact, in fact, I think it was, first time I remember talking about this, is councilman Armiento, councilwoman, Mayor Protem Martinez, and myself, we had just been elected, and I believe we were in a conference up in Sacramento, League of Cities. We're talking about just different opportunities for development within the city, areas that needed some attention. And the First Street corridor, this commercial corridor, its gateway into the city, was one of the areas we discussed. This was back in, we were elected in '06, appointed in '07, and so it was, you know, within the first quarter of 2007. Number of, not too long ago, maybe a couple of, about a year, year and a half ago or so, we were talking about once again, how do we improve and create some attention and investment in that First Street corridor? So the mixed Metro East Mixed Use Overlay Zone seemed like a natural to look at potentially having expansion. However, from that initial conversation, from what I recall, things have been sort of radio silent. We hadn't heard anything else, any further discussion until it came before council a couple of weeks back. So this is a pretty significant action that we would be taking. It's designating a land use, providing a land use designation to this key area, gateway into the city, as was mentioned by some of the members of the public. So the conversation, and I thought we had some very fruitful conversation at the EDIBIT Committee where we discussed the intent of the mixed use, the Metro East Mixed Use Overlay Zone that would enhance development, allow for various types of uses, ensure that there is a mix of housing and commercial. A lot of the focus was around commercial, around economic development, around opportunity to be able to create both some revenue, create destination, create places for some of the current residents and future residents of the city to be able to patronize business and have it be more of a, an urban village, if you will, a place where people can live and then, you know, walk out their door and go and shop and have some experience as well. Something I think we would all invite and would look forward to. However, to date, it seems like the existing plan hasn't quite come to fruition as we had planned. So the, and Mayor actually sat in on the meeting last week as well. Some of the conversation, again, which I thought was fruitful, led to how do we enhance? How do we more clearly create that, paint that vision, create clarity as to what we would like to see as a city and as a council, as policymakers, to be able to see the improvement of that corridor? That's where that item, the second option came up. There was two that were listed here on this item. One was to move forward, and then the second was to be able to continue the item so that there would be giving staff those 30 days to be able to provide some of that enhanced language. In any case, whether we move forward today with an approval or not, I still think that there is some opportunity to be able to have some, continue that fruitful discussion so that within two meetings, we could come back and have clarity. If for whatever reason, that's not the direction we're going, what I would request of staff is that we do continue, that staff does continue to be able to bring back, from what you've heard from council, how to bring clarity for future potential developments. Unfortunately, this has gotten messy, and to Mayor Protem's point, it was sloppy, and it's gotten messy in that now we have a project that's tied to this land use designation, and there's a policy discussion, and there's unfortunately is a project that's been kind of been held up and has been somewhat, you know, detrimentally, you know, at a, somewhat of a, just uncertainty. And so ideally, there was no project. We talk about this land use policy decision, have the council be able to vet that, discuss that, and then allow for projects to be able to apply, you know, through and go through the process. Unfortunately, that's not the case here. So what I would, regardless of what happens tonight, I still do think that the, ensuring that the purpose of the MIMU, to be able to enhance and create some of that commercial development, create that balance between housing and commercial, it is, it's critical. And I know that my time is up, but it is important, Mayor.
It is. Stand up and keep going.
A policy decision. This is what ultimately, the greatest and most important charge that the public places on us as council members and policymakers is this land use decision, yeah, land use designation, because it has implications in perpetuity for generations to come, and it's something that we should take seriously, and I think we do. So it is more than just one project and one developer and, you know, who they're connected to, and it should be what's going to be the impact to the city and to that corridor. So that is my comment. I would hope that we would even now entertain that conversation, would there be a detriment to be able to flesh out this a bit further and look at that option, too? If that's not the case, then I would hope that we would at least give staff, the trust staff, to be able to work out some of the comments that have been made, to be able to continue to bring back, bring that back for council.
Yes, Councilor. Does anybody else that wants to speak that hasn't spoken? Go ahead, go ahead.
I'll just make it really quick. And part of having this dialogue is part of our democracy and trying to come up with a way to find what best fits for our community. What I look at in making a decision is that this is going to bring in about $1.4 million in property tax each year into the city's funds. It's going to bring in about $1.85 million to $2 million one-time fees to the school district, which also helps out. But what really is something that, I do agree with Councilmember Armiento when he talks about, is this really going to benefit people here in our community or benefit others who are moving into our community? That's a very solid argument that is difficult to respond to. What I do know is that when you look at housing, you look at Newport Beach, it's 2.2 per person. In other words, the housing ratio is 2.2. In Anaheim, it's 2.8 to 1. In Costa Mesa, it's 2.7 to 1. Here in Santa Ana, it's 4.6 to 1. So we have a severe housing shortage. And that property there, I think we have an opportunity to beautify that area, to enhance the zoo, and to make it a nice entry point into the city. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Brief comment, Councilor Armiento.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I think development is important. Nobody disputes that, and nobody is trying to get in the way. In fact, I felt very troubled by this because we knew that we had some development projects and applicants that were in the existing boundary area that had been waiting for approval and consideration. So this has stalled them, and, you know, it just backs things up. But I guess to your comments, Mr. Hall, and to your comments, Mr. Reyes, it's how we get to a decision. It's how we get to a development project. We want it to be as pure, we want the integrity to be clean so we can be proud of this. When I spoke to the applicant, he told me that his project was ready for consideration nine months ago, almost a year ago. But he was told by staff that he should delay so this could be considered in tandem with the overlay zone and the expanded area. To me, that was very unclear and just counterintuitive because we could have addressed his issue, he could have been probably breaking ground, and we would have had a project that we're all proud of. Right? What was odd is that I also found that the, to Mayor Protem's point, the applicant was made to pay not just for the environmental document that governs that project, but for the entire expanded boundary area. That's a very irregular thing to happen. That normally doesn't happen. So we have to wonder why they're now embedded and interwoven in an environmental document where we're going to be approving an expanded boundary area, and that project is going to be approved by right. No longer will we have any discretionary rights as a legislative body to make sure that it complies with everything that we're supposed to see. So, you know, there's other information that, you know, the mayor came to a subcommittee where we addressed this. I don't think I've seen the merit ever in the 10 years that I've served at any subcommittee. But he made it a point to go and attend, and to our city attorney's point, he may have violated the Brown Act and made us all violate the Brown Act as a function of that. So it's very odd how you get here. To develop is important, and to hit windows of time is important, but it's how you get here as well. It's the means, and we want those means to be pure, and we want them to be right. What I've also heard is that the consultant that helped the applicant is a former employee of the city. Her name is Jill Arthur. She left the city years ago, and she left with a very, very blemished and tarnished record. And I know that the mayor is, by his own admission, has continued to work with her, but I don't know how much influence she's had in getting this project to where it is because it seems like everybody now on staff is burying their head in the sand, and nobody is saying anything. So that's a very odd thing as well, that they don't know how we got here. And for there not to be a record of this, look, things are going to happen as a consequence of this, so I'm, as an attorney, I'm compelled to make a record, and I want this to be clear. I want it to be in the minutes, and I want it to be clear that when this project is challenged, look, we're all on notice. So, Mr. City Manager, Madam City Attorney, the responses that you've given and your staff has given to the questions that you've been asked tonight are very, very, they just don't meet the standard that we would expect from your staff. And even though they weren't here and you weren't here, you by all means, when you bring agenda items to us, you should know the legislative history and do your research before you bring those before us. And understand, there's some dynamics here that are very strange.
Thank you.
And I don't think we should feel proud of any of it.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Go ahead, and then I've got, I haven't had a chance to make any comment yet.
Just a brief point. You know, in fairness to the current staff, primarily, you know, our city manager and then our new planning agency director, they've been here just a short time. To put all this accountability on them, I'm not sure is appropriate. I think the key documents are before us, which are a number of documents and very thick. So the analysis was done, they made recommendations. At the end of the day, it's the responsibility of the folks up here, not the staff, to make a decision on whether to go forward with this or not, and there have been, again, [inaudible]. And there have been, again, numerous meetings already here from the dais and in committees. So I think it is a little bit unfair to put, you know, the responsibility.
Okay, another very brief comment, Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to state for the record because I did mention it to our city attorney today that you attending the edbit meeting was a violation of the Brown Act. And number two, that this project that's embedded with this overlay zone seems like quid pro quo and that I will be sending a letter to the Attorney General to investigate.
Thank you. And with that, let me tell you why I think this is a good process and a good project. The MIMU has been going on for a long, long time. It's basically an overlay where projects are allowed to be built. When the folks at Warmers, which is the old Saddleback site, were doing their project, staff, and unfortunately, we've had a lot of turnover of staff, but I understand it was, you know, Hassan, the previous director, suggested that they work together because they were in the middle of the project. And yes, Hassan has passed away and may be rest in peace, but I believe that that was an appropriate thing to do. If the EIR is not done, you can't build a project. So if people work together and share in the obligation, the document at the end of the day has to speak for itself and we have a very solid environmental impact report that will stand up to any challenge. This project, I believe, is a net benefit to the city. Not only does it generate the jobs and the $1.4 million per year, but it's going to bring folks to an area of town that frankly has been dead. If you go by the Saddleback Inn where it used to be and you look at where the bridge used to be, we took that bridge down six years ago. In six years since the bridge is gone, nothing has happened. And before that, we had a building that was empty, that was burnt down, that we are trying to get people to raise it just because we had all the problems. And even today, we have problems. There's homeless in the old Elks Lodge, which folks can't even tear it down because we don't approve this environmental impact report. So I think if we do anything other than approve it, it's just kicking the can, it's just, you know, stalling for more time and we just ought to move forward. I think it's a solid plan. It's a solid project. Everybody's got a chance to speak. I call for the vote. Those in favor, please say aye.
Follow-up question. Do we have a second?
Yes, we do.
I do have a follow-up question for the planning director.
Go ahead, make it brief, please.
At the meeting, the committee meeting, there were some, and I, it's, I'm troubled by the fact that we even have to, that we're discussing a project along with this policy, the zoning. But unfortunately, this is where we are. So there was some conversation had and some comments by the applicant on the project where they had mentioned, indicated, the primary concern going back is that the commercial, whether we'll have enough commercial development within this gateway, this really commercial corridor into the city. It seems that there would be a potential for the majority of the development there to become housing. That's where there is, at least at present, a lot of interest, a lot of when we see the economy, the trending majority of development and where there is a significant return on investment is on housing development. So I think some of the hesitation is that it could potentially become primarily housing and some of the other amenities might be missing from that area. However, at the meeting, the applicant indicated there are two buildings that are part of their project and that they would consider having the building that rests along First Street to revisit that part of the project and to enhance the commercial component on their project. Am I correct in that? Mayor, you were there, you can confirm whether that's the case or not. And I'm curious whether there was, there has been any conversation and if they're still committed to and interested in doing that.
Certainly, you know, we did hear the applicant's representative, I believe it was Mr. Don, I forgot his last name, but representing Warmers. He did mention that they were open to revisiting the mix of the project in terms of residential versus commercial and do some enhancement. But you know, obviously, commitment needs to be made and it's made at the time when we review the project. So we haven't had further conversations since that meeting with the applicant.
That was the comment that was made, correct, Mayor? You were there?
Yes, there was a lot of comments made.
With regard to if we pass the, approve that the MIMU right now, that expansion, is there a potential that it would be predominantly housing? I'm looking at even considering that the mix on this project, the 600, I believe 600-some units and...
So in my, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so well, that's in essence.
So in my review of the...
I'm going to cut it off. Go ahead.
In my review of the existing MIMU language, certainly does inspire a variety of vision to create that urban village. As you mentioned, it talks about looking at pedestrian-oriented development, looking at economic development, and creating destinations that allows for both retail commercial, office commercial, and residential, really creating a place for people to live, work, and shop. But since 2007, I think some of the project that has come on board, as you can see, has not, I think the concerns I've heard is that the existing regulations, the way it's been implemented, has not attracted the kind of development that has made that vision a reality. So that's where we are now. If there were refinements that were to be made, you know, as recommended by the edbit, there could be potential for stronger language that would allow for making sure that that's more of an emphasis as we move forward.
If the MIMU were approved tonight, could it, does it preclude staff from working on refining that language and incorporating it for future projects to be presented for...
It doesn't. I don't think it does, in my opinion. But what it hasn't, I guess really, the question for me is that does it reflect what some of the concerns that I heard and are we able to take those and translate into stronger emphasis so that it helps with the implementation? Does it stop us from doing that today? Absolutely not. We're able to work with developers to make that happen. But I think without a strong vision, without an alignment to what the council members here see as what the MIMU could move forward, it would be helpful for staff to have a unified message.
All right. So with that, I thank you. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
No.
Those opposed?
No.
We have two noes, four ayes.
Mayor, I'd just like to do this as unusual thing, but it is to state for the record if the city clerk could report the votes out.
Roll call vote is fine.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Aye.
Councilmember Tina Harrow?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Polito?
Yes.
Councilmember Benavides?
I'm not going to be voting for it tonight.
Councilmember Villegas?
My aye, yes.
Councilmember Solario?
Aye.
We have a 4-3 vote.
Thank you. So with that, I turn attention to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to continue this item for two weeks.
Was it 4-2, 4-2-1, I think is what it was. I think I heard Councilmember Benavides abstain or...
I don't have the option to abstain. I don't think I don't have the option.
So it's a no, okay. Just to...
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, a two-week continuance to work with staff on this consolidate annual performance evaluation. I'd like to continue that for two weeks.
Second. 25D?
75D.
75D, but what about, did we do 75C, Madam? Let's do 75C first. So 75C is a public hearing resolutions to authorize negotiations for the sale of portions of city-owned real estate, 1301, 1305 West 12th Street. Do we have any speakers at which to address this?
We have two speakers. Rick Marshall and Karen Rodriguez.
All right. Greg Marshall, if you could come on up. Rick Marshall and then Karen Rodriguez.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm a property owner of a strip mall on the corner of Washington and Bristol. It's right adjacent to the two vacant lots that we're talking about here tonight. We're hoping to purchase the lots from the city to develop into a parking lot because we had to give up 3,000 square feet of our existing parking lot for the Bristol Street widening project. Is that good?
Thank you. Karen?
My name is Karen Rodriguez. I am a resident from Santana. I'm also organizing with the court. I would just like to take this moment to say that I oppose any sale of city-owned property without transparency and community input. You all are city council members who are elected by residents in Santana, so your main priority when thinking about further development in the city should be to see how it benefits the people in it. You know, there was a lot of talk about the development coming up and as Michelle Martinez was angry, imagine how the residents feel when you don't take them into consideration. So we know that organizations and residents have been reaching out to you all to take them into consideration, sit down with them, listen to them, and hear their thoughts as to how you should disperse and sell these properties. I just want to remind you all that this is city property and again, the city, the people in the city should have a say. And so with that being said, in fight, in our fight to acquire affordable housing and open space for its residents, the community needs representation, but it also needs transparency and accountability from you all. We know that it's possible to have residents in these committees and talk with these developers and choose, they should have more, they should have more say as to how their community dictates their space. So again, I would just like to remind you all that you work for residents and you represent residents. So please, in accordance to this development, make sure you remember that there are people who need housing, who need open space, and who would like to sit down and talk with you regarding this issue.
Thank you. So with that, is there anybody else at which to address city council? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it to council for consideration. Councilor Solario?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was one that wanted a continuous on this item for more information. But I think there are some legal questions as well and I know our city attorney maybe is...
Can somebody get our city attorney? She's outside the hall there.
If we could bring her out, that would be great. Here she comes. While she gets settled, I'll just start with a little bit of overview. I agree with some of the comments made about process and transparency. I actually, I think it was probably a month ago when this item came up, I had some reservations about it because I know we've been trying to work on a policy that addresses all the vacant or underused lots that we have citywide and having a good and open process for that. I know there's still work to be done on that, apparently. But in the meantime, we do have certain corridors, like the Bristol Street corridor where there's been a lot of construction, a lot of anxiety, stress, you know, parts of businesses or homeowners' land shaven, and you know, they've been accommodated for at fair market value, et cetera. But that is a major corridor, a lot of people travel that corridor and so in areas where there's available land, I know there's been interest from neighboring property owners or folks citywide that want to see what's happening with that land. I was concerned that the city was making an arrangement with one property owner for adjacent land where there are, in my view, multiple lots throughout that corridor that have possibly similar considerations. Staff did do an analysis as we had discussed to see what kind of comparable pieces of land there were and so I'll mention them. Comparable pieces of land are 1247 West Internet Boulevard and 515 and 517 North Bristol Street that really maybe don't make themselves accessible for a brand-new use, if you will. Maybe they are better used by surrounding property owners. I'm okay with moving forward on this process with a legal question. But having said that, I would like staff to reach out or notice additional property owners around the other two, the other three parcels to see if there's interest because what I don't like is special consideration where somebody raises their hand but there are comparable consideration elsewhere and others aren't given that opportunity. My question, that's a legal question because indirectly was addressed by one of the participants and we received the letter as well. Given the timing and the situation here, are we legally able to, with notice and time given, are we able to sell this parcel?
Yes, if you're talking about the property that's listed in the staff report, we would be selling this pursuant to Section 2-709 of your municipal code, which allows for the exception for you to sell the parcel in this manner by, I believe it's a two-thirds vote of the city council.
Okay, okay. So that's a consideration and the exception. So with that, I am supportive and I do appreciate the staff's work. But again, a little bit more work to be done in that we have some related parcels that I think should be treated equally. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I've been consistent with my messaging and I had a conversation with our city manager yesterday. I'm going to be of a no vote. I do want to thank our public works director for putting a comprehensive report together. But I've made it very clear for many years and prior to you, Mr. City Manager, it was David Cavassos and I asked him and his staff to embark on creating a plan of what we were going to do with Bristol and they put that matrix together. We then asked to put a policy of how we would move forward with those surplus properties. And you know, we then had Director Schirchme come and work with our community and provide something that came before this council. No action was taken. And so here we are, when we say we are going to be transparent, that we're going to have a process of how we're going to move forward with city-owned property, trust me, I'm one of the first to say that I want to get all city-owned property on the tax rolls. We need to do that. But we need to do it in a deliberate process, one that is open and transparent and that it is, it moves forward from a council policy decision and not from an administrative or staff. And you know, here we are, making recommendations without a process that this city council said it wanted to go through. And certainly, I'm not putting any blame on you, Mr. City Manager, you had your staff present this to us, not once, but three times. And it fell to death years and we didn't take any action on this dais. And so now we're here and so because a process hasn't come before us or a policy, I cannot support this until we have a process and a policy to move forward with any other future city-owned property. Thank you.
Any other thoughts, Councilor Sarmiento?
Thank you. So I'm not opposed to the sale of these parcels either. I don't think anybody is. I guess the concern I had is again, a procedural one to make sure that we've been asked and over and over again, and I want to thank our new community development director to have sort of taken some of the information from his predecessor in the requests that have been made by some community leaders to be part of the process in selecting what future these parcels have. As you know, this isn't our land, this is the public's land. We're just stewards trying to make sure that we get not just the highest return and the highest value for that public land, but also the best use, a community use, something that our residents are going to be able to benefit from. So I don't know why it appears, and I know I've spoken to individual staff members, I guess the question that could never be answered is, is it possible to have a community member, a neighbor, a resident, a homeowner, to sit on that board or committee when these properties are being put on the market and listed and their use is being discussed? I would think that since the public, since this is the public's property, wouldn't they have a right to sit down and comment and be part of the process? Is there anything that would violate our charter, violate our municipal code, or violate state law?
Yep. Councilmember, I'd have to know a little bit more about that, but I would think that if that committee was formed by the city...
But Madam City Attorney, we've received several letters of correspondence from folks who've been asking that very thing. And I know that I've read several reports and documents delivered by the, by community members and they've asked that simple question, that if they could have a seat at the table.
That's a policy issue. I thought you were asking about the legal issue. Were there any legal issues?
Right, well, I'm asking both.
Okay, so I can answer the legal issue, I'll leave the policy questions or how that is. But I was just going to say that I think the only thing we'd have to look at is if a committee or commission is formed by the city council and if those members are reporting under the political reform act, they could potentially have the same type of conflict that you all have if their property is...
Assuming they're not anywhere near...
But if they weren't, exactly.
Conflict, they don't have any economic benefit.
If they were outside, if they were outside and did not have economic interest, there would be no... would be no problem whatsoever. That's the only issue I think I would look at.
And I'm not talking about forming a committee. There's already, there's already folks from staff that are going to be discussing this because this is done by a team, and so, you know, is it, what is, I guess, what's the argument against having somebody, a member of the public sitting on a committee?
So I'll take a stab at it, and then I'll have my executive director of CDA also add in. It's highly unusual. I don't know of any city that has that kind of a policy. In fact, we, we were looking, we don't have a committee currently in terms of how properties get recommended for disposal. It's sort of been fragmented, as is the case in a lot of cities, where properties controlled by the Public Works Department will determine how to do that, and properties held by the Housing Authority or former redevelopment agency will sort of manage their properties. So what staff was recommending is a committee made up of staff, internal staff from different departments, that would look for the best and highest, you know, use in terms of recommending how to dispose of a particular parcel, but those meetings would be open to the public, allow for public input. We would notify the surrounding community or neighborhood that, of a parcel that was being proposed for disposal, so it was super transparent and super cumbersome, as a matter of fact, in, in an effort to try to be as transparent as possible. The only thing that they did not offer is a seat at the table for community members. So that's a policy call. We thought, I personally thought that we'd have to then come up with, how do we choose those community members? And then we have the potential for conflict, as the city attorney mentioned, so that's why I did not recommend it, but certainly it's a policy call.
Well, we just did something that was very highly unusual before this decision, so, look, we're on a roll. So maybe, you know, giving, giving, you know, a role to somebody from the community isn't that far-fetched. So adding an additional chair to a committee of our staff, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to that.
And I would support that as well. I would support that as well. All right, Councilor Solario.
Yeah, just one comment. You know, I'm open to it. I think we need public participation via a few levels. I mean, this dais too is made up of residents, so there is, you know, public oversight, obviously, but we have several commissions, and so maybe these kinds of decisions can also go to commissions for consideration. We all have appointees there. If there is anything separate to that, you know, for balance and variety, maybe there's a variety of residents, maybe a neighborhood association rep, maybe a nonprofit rep, maybe a Chamber of Commerce rep, so that there's, you know, fairness and a variety of opinions around the table, but I do feel that we have, you know, several commissions that are staffed already, that maybe that would be a good avenue as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
I would like to make a motion to move in a different direction based on what I hear on this count, the dais up here today, to direct staff to come back with a process and options of what that committee would look like, whether it is through what Councilman Solario just mentioned, through commissioners that already have been established throughout the city, and/or the hybrid that Councilman Sarmiento is speaking of, if that can come back to this council. I know a lot of work was, has already been done. I think the last step was this committee, and so, if we can bring this to the next council so that we could have a policy in place and/or the direction and option to form a committee of community folks.
I'll second that. Okay, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion, who carries?
Okay, so we'll bring something in terms of a work-study session?
No work-study session.
A recommendation.
It's a recommendation to do action.
Right, no, I think that, well, what I was going to recommend, Mayor Protem, is if I could come back with a work-study with options, get input, get discussion, we come back with the actual final product after input. I think it might be a little bit easier to work with that, because otherwise I don't know.
I think a lot of work, Mr. City Manager, has been done with the former Economic Development Director. I think the last point that we needed to discuss was the issue of a committee, so I don't think we need to do a study session. I think is providing us the options is what we would like to come before us. Thank you.
All right, so with that, we're on to the next item.
If I may add, we were stuck at them wanting six committee members, not the one. The last version that this council saw...
So give us that option, one member versus six members, and what that would look like. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, if we could have a vote on item 75C, because what we had, we just had a motion was on a separate direction, a separate item, but 75C, I don't think we've had a vote on that yet.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion on 75C, the original. Madam City Attorney?
I'm sorry, 70, I'm sorry, it was, yeah, it is 75C, the disposal of the property.
I thought that the motion was not to dispose and to give staff direction.
Right, that's what the vote was.
Yes, that's the vote.
Oh, so not dispose? I thought that was a separate...
That was the vote.
No, that's the vote.
I see, okay.
All right, 75D, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to continue this item for two weeks. We're going to continue, yeah, we're going to continue for two weeks.
Okay, so we're continuing that. Is there a second? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. 85A, who wants to take that? Councilor Tina Harrow?
I'm going to let...
Sarmiento, go ahead.
Councilman Sarmiento will start.
Yes, thank you. So I'll go ahead and lead off and be the lead batter for...
We have, excuse me, we have the superintendent and a board member here. Why don't you guys come on down because you're going to speak shortly.
We did, so I'm hoping I'll go ahead and cede the floor to them so they can go ahead and speak to this item as well, because this is, this is hopefully what I consider to be a future joint effort between this body and the Santa Ana Unified School District. So it's been fairly well-revealed in the media, and thank you, Madam Superintendent, Madam President, and trustee, for joining us. But this has been, you know, something that came to my attention, and it didn't come through by, you know, the media or anything else. A personal friend of mine, who's an assistant high school football coach, was present the night of the football game between Santa Ana High and Eliso Viejo, and I'm not sure if you know Tim Smith, but Tim Smith is a dear friend who we've actually recognized here at a city council meeting. He's also a pastor, and he's also a former Valley High School student. In any event, he was there and he sent me a text message about what was occurring the night of the event, and we spoke, and he was very, very unsettled by what he saw, what he heard, and, and, you know, it really made me very, it disappointed me and saddened me, and then I started seeing some of the photographs and the images and seeing some of the social media posts that were made against principal from Santa Ana High. And so, look, I know I had a conversation with you, Madam Superintendent, at an event, I think, last week, and the reason why I wanted to put this on before this body was to make sure we can be as supportive as we can in your efforts that you've already let off, and you've mentioned to me that you're going to be starting discussions with your counterparts in Eliso Viejo and maybe some other cities that feel, hopefully, compelled to be part of the solution, because I think this could be a teaching moment, right? I think there were some very unfortunate things that I heard that were said, and this wasn't covered by the media. This was by, you know, firsthand information, and, you know, it's funny, you wouldn't look at it if you, you wouldn't think about it if you saw me, but I played football once in my life, and, and it was, and we had bigger pads.
He was the ball.
I was a kicker. No, it wasn't. I was actually a receiver, but in any event, I remember some very disparaging comments being made back then, right? And so that was years, you know, 35 years ago, 40 years ago, and you would think that those comments would be dead and gone, and they wouldn't be uttered any longer, but the same comments that were recited, you know, against your players were used against some of our players years ago. And so, it's very troubling, it's very saddening, and again, not to talk about the veracity of what was said, and that's not what we're here to do. I guess what I wanted us to do is just avail ourselves and avail, you know, our help and our effort to make sure that, you know, this problem is addressed appropriately. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to my, to my colleague.
Yes, and part of the reason why I decided to sign on, on this with Councilmember Sarmiento is that, yeah, I take it personally. These are our students, and, and when I spoke to some of the students, my son goes to Santa Ana High School, so when we talked to his, his teammates that were at the game and people that were there, and I wanted to double-check and make sure that what was being said occurred. I didn't want to jump to conclusions, but the information that kept coming back from different folks who were there, some people that are extremely credible, that don't hyperbolize, and they explained what was discussed by some people, and in no way do we want to say that the entire community of Eliso Viejo feels the same way. Unfortunately, there's a handful of individuals who created this issue, but I do believe that there are some leaders in that community who also instigated some of this, and I, I'm going to be very direct, because, you know me, I don't like to beat around the bush. The mayor's wife said some horrible things about our principal at Santa Ana, and she has no concept to what extent that principal goes out of his way day in and day out to provide services for our kids. That school had a huge, years ago, had a high number of suspensions. That's been completely turned around, to the point where it's the most populated...
Sal, can you just make it clear that it was not this mayor, that it's the mayor of Eliso Viejo?
I saw him ask you.
For the record, thank you.
I'm going to clarify, it's...
It was not your wife.
The mayor's wife of Eliso, Eliso Viejo, and, and, you know, one of the things that really struck, struck me was that how easy it was to go ahead and demonize a person like that, and so, I think we owe it to our students to let them know that we're always behind them 100% of the way, but I do want to say this, and this is important. You have two superintendents who quickly got on the phone, had a conversation, and said, "Let's make this a teachable moment for all of our students. Let's have open dialogue." And so, that is what leaders are supposed to do in situations like that, never forgetting the hurt that our kids have to deal with, and I think what people don't understand is when you are a minority, the first derogatory comment that you, you hear is usually when you're in elementary school, and it hurts, and then you go to an adult, and the adult usually tells you, "Just ignore it. Don't pay attention to it. That's what we're taught." Then you hear it again, and again, you're told to ignore it. It's okay, just don't listen to them. They don't know what they're talking about. They're ignorant. Then you get older, and you hear it again, and you tell yourself to ignore it and not pay attention to it. Well, I'm 47 years old. I'm tired of ignoring it, and I don't think we should ignore it, and so that is why we need to have these conversations, and that's where we're going to have change. So I'll leave it at that, and I'd like to yield the floor to, to you leaders that lead our children into success in our district.
Was there any other comments? I'm sorry.
Please, President Amesqua.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Martinez, I appreciate it. I want to thank you very much for bringing this forward and discussing this tonight and supporting us. Superintendent can go into a little bit of detail, but let me just tell you, we are making it a teaching moment, and there are electeds in South County that are also being very supportive, and immediately on Saturday morning, they called me at 7:00 in the morning, "Val, how can we help you?" And, "We're very sorry, and let's move forward, but let's look at it first." And so, we have been doing that as a board, working with the superintendent and the cabinet and all the staff. Mr. Bishop is an amazing principal, and the school, we're working with them for the healing process. It's been all over the media, national news, but we are going to help our children heal, and how are we doing that? We're working with the Orange County Human Relations Commission. We're going to, and I'll let Dr. Phillips talk more about that, bring our districts together, because as a board and all of us, we do not want to create a bigger problem. I think sometimes as adults, we become the talking heads, and we miss the point, that it's about our children. It's about how do we help our children navigate this political climate? How do we help them? As Councilwoman Tina Harrow said, it starts in elementary school, right? Back then, we'd say, "It's okay, mijo," and, you know, and say you're sorry, and then we move on, and we end up playing together on the playground, but then as you get older, it resonates more and it's deeper, and the cuts become deeper, and so, for us, it's about teaching our children that, first of all, I want to say, let me just back a minute, our children were classy. They didn't say anything, they didn't do anything, and they represented us well, and that's what we've taught them to do, and that's because of Mr. Bishop and his staff and the entire district. But we are using this as a teaching moment for everybody who's watching across, across the country, because we have school districts across the county that have reached out to us and want to have a summit with us, and that's what we'll be doing with the Orange County Human Relations Commission, and so, we're going to bring our schools together so that they can start healing, and it really isn't about them, you know, because not all of them said something or did something. It was those few, and so, but those few created all of this mess that we're in right now and that we're working on healing, and so, I'll leave you with this, you know, because some people in the community, even our community, are like, "Well, we're making it a bigger thing than what it is." Well, when you're walking to the bus and you're in our band, and somebody tells you, "Go back to the strawberry fields where you belong," and it's a bad day to be Mexican, isn't it? You can't leave that there. You can't leave that there, but that's powerful. It's powerful, because when people think of Santa Ana, they think, "Oh, those kids are all gang members. Oh, they're all poor." No, we're not all gang members. No, we're not. I don't think any of you are, right? None of us are, all the audience, and even if, even if I was, so what? You still treat people with dignity and respect. That's the bottom line, always, because we are all the same, and so, I'll just leave you with that, and so, our kids, when they say to us, "What do, how do we, that hurts, like, that was, that hurts," and so, we're working together, and so I do want to thank you again for bringing this forward, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Phillips. Thank you.
Thank you, council, mayor, all the council members. You know, the support that we've gotten and the outreach from our, not only our fellow districts, but from council people, from governing board members from the other district, from CAPO, has been incredible, because I think that although a few people really did some damage to our kids, and that is unacceptable, there's a lot of people out there who want to do the right thing and who want to be a part of the solution. So that's the point that we're trying to make throughout the county, is that, you know what, we can all grow and we can all learn together, and so Santa Ana's going to lead that. Santa Ana's going to partner with Capistrano Unified and the County Office of Education and bring all of this to some, some level of positive conversation, because not only do our kids need to learn from this, we need to learn from this. Let them teach us how to resolve this in a different way than what we were brought up being exposed to. As an African-American young woman, and as an African-American child, I too had some of those same experiences, different community, similar experience, and that was hurtful, and I've never wanted my sons to experience that, but unfortunately, they have as well. So it's time to break that cycle and create a different conversation so that our kids know how to do things differently, not just our kids, all the kids, because all kids deserve to be treated with respect and dignity, and we have to teach that, and we have to lead with that. And so, I really appreciate the fact that the council is behind us. We knew that you were, but this is a huge statement to us, and we will continue to keep you in the loop as, as things develop. We're just really, really pleased with the way our kids behaved, with the way they have handled themselves, and their ability to move, forgive, and learn, and move on. So I'm just really proud to be a resident in Santa Ana and proud to be the leader of the school system, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jose Solario?
Yes, I just want to thank the electeds and the superintendent as well. I think we were all very touched by what happened, I think, given the national politics, emotions, kind of our high on both sides, and situations like that happen fast, and maybe we heard some things, said some things, but what is real is the feeling of the students, and I think, you know, a lot of harm is done at the elementary level, but for some of our kids, they don't see somebody non-Latino till older. They've never been to the beach. They've never been outside of the county, so they encounter a situation like that, it touches them in a way that is, can be harsh, and that's why things like ethnic studies are very important, and that's why this kind of dialogue between the districts is important. I know several of the school board members at CAPO Unified reached out to school board members, the staff, also some of the councilmen, myself included, so I do know that they do have... So I do know that they do have some very caring leaders in that community as well. Not just that, you know, other, other person that was mentioned previously, but I do want to thank the professionalism that the school board members and the superintendent showed in this. Because it's also just very easy to just solely react based on emotion, and we need to turn this into a way to build character and learning and understanding. So, thank you so much. As, as you all know, my wife is a proud teacher there at Santa Ana High School and teaches ethnic studies. So she's taken this as an opportunity to talk about really the students and what it means for them and how to move forward. But thank you as well.
Councilman Solario, please thank her, because she's been working very closely with her children in her classroom. And you're right, ethnic studies is very important. And as a district, we have it. I believe we have six different classrooms. We're, we're expanding. Again, you know, that is an area that we are expanding in, just like we're expanding in other areas. But it's very important so that they understand, we understand. And we are gonna be sharing with them about a little bit of ethnic studies, a little healing circle. So we're, we're gonna be doing all that with the Orange County Human Relations. So, but thank you for your support as well.
Thank you for the good work. Thank you. So with that, let me bring it back to council. I think all we have are some public comments. Do you want to go first, because you're standing with your hand raised?
I wanted to make a comment about Santa Ana High, frontline commenter about that Santa Ana-
Why are you speaking when you do the public comments? Because you're gonna be speaking in a minute here.
Yes, sir.
Donna Lane.
Do we need action? Do you need any direction on 85A? Is there, just because it was direction to staff, so should we-
Provide direction. So, if it's-
Go ahead.
Just so, just so it's reflected as presented in the, in the agenda item, that we are going to support the efforts and work-
And the affirmative.
Okay. So I'll, we'll move the item.
Second. Those in favor? Aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay, Donna Lane.
Yes. Donna Lane, West Floral Park Neighborhood Association President. First, I would like to thank the Santa Ana Police Department. I think they're gone, most of them. Code enforcement, Councilman Solario, for helping close down, shut down the Happy Time Cyber Cafe. That was quite a dramatic shutdown, but all the residents were quite impressed. So thank you for all of your efforts on that, because we had many, many terrified neighbors with them as a neighbor. Second of all, you were talking about parking, or rather, parking tickets and getting revenue from that. Well, I have another idea. Come to our neighborhood around school starting time, or school exit time, or any time on town, or speeding has become a real issue in our neighborhood. Not stopping at stop signs has become a real issue in our neighborhood. And I, I understand Floral Park, it's the same way. And I do know with all the construction going on, rerouting, people are cutting through the neighborhoods. But just have a cop out there once or twice a week, and I'm sure you can get lots of revenue from, or for the city with all these tickets of these people. Anyway, we would appreciate some attention. And just another aside, please, 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 work very hard in getting a full staff on the Santa Ana Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Raoul Nolasco.
It is my privilege to stand in front of Commander Polito and his regime. I'm asking Commander Polito and his regime to prevent computer intrusion at SAPL. Computer intrusion must be stopped for three reasons. First, computer intrusion can get in the way of writing to the most powerful man on earth, Donald J. Trump. Second, computer intrusion can get in the way of writing to the beautiful, Fortune-ranked Ivanka Trump. Third, computer intrusion is nonsense when reaching Jersey Shore stars, typing up tweets or writing to the chief. Commander Polito, stop the computer intrusion now at SAPL. We're taking over the world. Those in favor say aye. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Gabriela Gonzalez.
Thank you so much, and good evening again. My name's Gabriela Gonzalez. I represent Casa de la Familia, or CDLF Counseling. We provide mental health services to the city of Santa Ana and Orange County for the past two decades. And I am here to promote our domestic violence awareness campaign for the month of October. I know it's not October, but I know you guys have busy schedules. And also to ask for your support. We're working in partnership with the Santa Ana Public Library on a series of workshops and events to raise awareness, to provide education, and provide links to services for our community. We believe that one family that's suffering in silence is too many. So we're really excited about that. We're gonna kick off those events on Thursday, October the 4th. So we invite the council to join us in that kickoff event at the Santa Ana Public Library. We've sent information over to your offices. And we're hosting a domestic violence awareness concert at the Santa Ana Public Library on Saturday, October 13th. That's free and open to the public with partners like CalOptima, Orange County's Credit Union, Human Options, and others. Lastly, we're also doing and hoping to promote a Go Purple lighting initiative. We sent a proposal to the city manager's office. We're hoping to get your support in raising more awareness by lighting buildings, landmarks in Santa Ana in purple. We don't want this to be something that's costly for the city, but hoping to work with the resources we already have, like the Santa Ana Transportation Center, they have those big strobe lights. We can get gel filters, and that can change the lighting purple. The Santa Ana Public Library is on the list. The Santa Ana Water Tower is a huge site. I know that proposal's already sent in. And there's, there's a few things on the list, City Hall, downtown Ford Street. So there's, I think, things that we can do that will not cost the city money, but that will help us in raising more awareness so that our families are living safely and enjoying our city, not fearing our city. So, thank you, hope you guys can support us.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Dale Helvig, followed by Connie Hamilton. Connie left, okay.
Yeah, Dale Helvig, Park Santiago Neighborhood Association. Just wanted to say, I think, 85A, I'm glad you guys brought that up. I think it's important, and I hope everybody has a positive learning moment out of it. I had some stuff to say about 2525, but with only three of you there, I don't feel like I need to waste everybody's time on it right now. I find it disappointing that everybody disappears on public comment time. You know, we stick around here, we want to give a message to people, and you guys aren't even here, so.
I apologize for that.
I'll, I'll send you guys all a letter with what I was gonna say.
I, I, I echo that, and my sincere apologies for that.
Thank you, Mr. Helvig. Peter Katz, followed by Michael Plantamura.
Yeah, the input that the public gives is very valuable, you know, and I echo those same sentiments. As long as we go through time, things don't seem to change very much. We've come a long ways, but they haven't. Back in 1968, I was arrested for drinking out of the wrong water fountain in Jacksonville, Florida. So, so we have a lot of teaching moments. What I would like to say is, a new survey just came out by the state of California that now shows that 49% of the residents of this state are now below the poverty line. So, we're going to raise the sales tax by one and a half percent, making it nine and a quarter, the highest in the county, and putting us only a half, I believe, below the state maximum that you can allow under the Constitution. And yet, we're drifting towards insolvency. I think a citizen advisory overboard is needed. If the sales tax passes, we need to find a way to retire this retirement debt. Because not only Santa Ana, but many cities are heading towards bankruptcy. And so, if you get this $60 million a year, we can't squander it away. We have to find a way to pay these bills. Because I've heard other cities working this direction, and, and it's gonna get scary. I have a newspaper article here from November 11th, 1911. It talks about the Lazaro family in the East Side neighborhood in Santa Ana, how they dream of owning their own home. That was almost 10 years ago. In 10 years, that neighborhood hasn't changed very much, and those same dreams are being inspired by young kids. But the problem with it is, no matter how much you build for affordable housing, people come in from outside, because it's cheaper in Santa Ana. So that dream will never be realized in the city of Santa Ana. You have to come up with an outside-the-box idea. You have over 2,000 state, federal, and county, and city workers that work in the city of Santa Ana, but 85% of them live outside the city of Santa Ana. We have to create an incentive to make people that get these jobs in our city, give them some type of incentive, like we do with law enforcement and firefighters, to purchase property and live in Santa Ana. They're spending all that money that they make in Santa Ana outside the city. So that's the only way you're gonna stop gentrification of housing being built. All you're doing is creating more poor residents in the city. We're not giving incentives for people to stay and live in the city. These people are making decent, good money. We have to find a way to say, "Hey, don't live in Orange and work in Santa Ana. Live in Santa Ana and work in Santa Ana. These are good jobs."
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Can you wrap it up, please?
Yeah, I will. I just wanted to say, one more thing is, I just want to remind everybody, tomorrow night, there's a debate at the Delhi Center for all the candidates running for city council and for mayor. So if you want to hear the questions answered to these candidates, please show up 505 East Central Avenue in Santa Ana from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's Wednesday, September 19th. There's also one at the same location on Thursday, September 20th, put on by the Chamber of Commerce. So, appreciate people come out and exercise your vote and get out to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Michael Plantamura.
City clerk, may I just ask how many cards we have remaining? Councilmember Viejas?
We have four more.
Okay, just want to just note for the record that our city council meeting will be deemed adjourned for lack of a quorum. However, you may continue to hear your public comments, and I would encourage you to do so as these meetings are taped, and we did have individuals who waited to speak this evening.
We will continue with the public comments for the record.
So I would recommend that you proceed, but for purposes of, of the minutes, we are officially adjourned.
Thank you, madam. City attorney.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, council members, and thank you very much for staying late. I know it's been a long day, and I very much appreciate your participation in the public comments. My name's Mike Punamira, and I live in Park Santiago. And I'm here to talk about the 2525 Main Street project. My wife Karen and I moved into the Park Santiago neighborhood over 14 years ago. We both grew up back east and fell in love with the neighborhood because it reminded us of our early years. Single-family homes, all different with character and charm, large yards and friendly neighbors. We both get a kick out of our friends' reactions when they first come to visit our neighborhood. They are very surprised because they picture Santiago as an overcrowded, and overly crowded houses with lots of apartment buildings and the blight that goes with it. They never realize that Santa Ana has neighborhoods like Park Santiago. They too love the neighborhood. However, this story points to the problem with the image that has been fed over the years by bad city council decisions and feeding the overly crowded, apartment-filled vision of Santa Ana by siding with contractors instead of the residents when it comes to highly-density building projects. As you know, currently, over 32% of the housing units in Santa Ana are apartments. And the project that we're talking about, 2525 Main, is primarily studio and one, single-family, I mean, one-bedroom apartments. I think it's like 60 or 70%. With all the recent activity of pushing more apartments, we're getting closer and closer to 50% of our units being apartments. The 2525 Main Street project, if approved by the council, continues to feed the negative image of Santa Ana. It is threatening to turn our unique, charming Park Santiago neighborhood into another French park experience. By eliminating a parcel of land that could provide high-paying professional jobs for our children, like cybersecurity, or maybe even computer graphics-type jobs that pay, that pay well, this project will rob our children of that opportunity and will add to the loss of high-paying professional jobs to the cities like Irvine and other neighboring cities, while Santa Ana pushes for more low-paying retail waiter and waitress-type jobs. In this half-mile area, there are plans to add over 3,000 apartment units, including 1,900 Main Place Mall renovation, in addition to those around town and country.
Thank you, sir. If you could wrap it up, please.
Some, some of the current zoning ideas that were brought up, maybe like a museum or arts, which would go well with the, with the Bowers and the Discovery Center and the Orange County School of Arts. Just please think of our lovely neighborhood when you consider this badly-planned project instead of the developers. And I want to thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Connie Hamilton.
Hi, I was trying to leave, and my battery's dead. So Peter's gonna give me a jump. Gosh, there's hardly any of you left. But that's okay. Anyway, Peter told you about the candidate forum. I think most of you knew about it. One thing that he didn't mention is that there's 11 council candidates that are gonna be running in November. So this will be a good candidate forum to hear what they're all about, and just two mayoral candidates. So it'll be interesting. I don't know if anyone saw the Feet to the Fire Forum in Santa Ana last night. Oh, boy. That was a dilly. They call us the Wild West. Those two mayors, mayor candidates are really going after each other, and both of them are on the council, too, like here. So, anyway, I think ours will be more stable than theirs. I, I plan on that. I hope so. Anyway, so I just want to let everyone know that we are having the candidate forum at the Delhi, 6 to 8 o'clock, and you can come early, 5:30, and we'll feed you, and you could talk to other residents and some of the elected, some of the candidates that are running. So it'd be a good chance to get to know them, anyway. And I thank Peter for filling in for me, but as it turned out, I'm not going anywhere right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, that, ours is more Beauty and the Beast, though I will not allow anybody else to call the mayor a beast, because he's my colleague, I can get along with him like that. So anyways, we'll get there, we'll get there.
Dilly Lay.
Hey, you leave early, you lose a little bit, you know.
Followed by V. Chavis.
Good evening, you remaining council members. I bring with myself God's blessings for you. How dare you to disappear when we come to tell you something? How can we possibly communicate with you if, if you're all gone? Now, you guys are here, thank you for that. God bless you. I had planned to say something, but I'm so disappointed in the absenteeism of you. Just the one piece. We've been talking about the congestion of 2525 Main Street, and it occurred to me the other day as I was leaving the area, and I stopped at Edgemont and Main, and I looked to my left. Now, I've been living here 42 years, so this is not something new that came to me. And I looked to my left, and there is the Santa Ana Freeway unloading on Main Street. And that is to show you, it's only 49 feet away, 49 inches, no, 49 feet away, yeah, from, from Edgewood. Just one more piece, one more component, so that you can consider when you're gonna debate whether or not you'll approve anything for what they call this, I call it Satan's project, because it's just done so much disruption, so much hurt and pain and agony for our community. We had 62 people come out to the developer guys that approve it, and just to voice their opinions. You guys have hurt us and hurt us and hurt us and hurt us. I pray that you will be good fiscal people, not just for the city of Santa Ana, when you vote on this project, but that you will be fiscally responsible for us, too. Please, consider that. And thank you, remaining members that are here tonight. Please, tell your colleagues to be courteous to us. We sat here for two hours or two and a half hours, you give us two minutes, and then you guys disappear. You're here, but that's a small request. That's not a huge thing. You guys can do that. So pull that one off. God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
Buenas noches, concejales, que están aquí presentes. A lo mejor piensen que me equivoqué de foro, pero en realidad no. Quiero usar cualquier foro posible para oponerme a una medida que va a aparecer en las boletas de noviembre. Okay. Mi nombre es Benansios Chavez, y soy residente de- Mi nombre es Venancio Chavez y soy residente de Santana por más de 25 años. En mi país, las personas mayores usaban dichos para enseñarnos a los más jóvenes. Y hoy quiero compartir algunos dichos con ustedes hoy. El primero, árbol que crece torcido jamás su tronco endereza. El segundo dice, genio y figura hasta la sepultura. El primero lo voy a usar para describir al Distrito Escolar de Santana. El Distrito Escolar de Santana es un árbol retorcido, que aunque los votantes de esta ciudad pasemos medidas en pro de la educación, el distrito nunca va a proveer una educación de calidad a nuestros niños.
Perdón un momento. Madam City Attorney, is he allowed to make comment regarding the school board, or is this city business only?
It's really up to the councils to whether you want to entertain the comment, but if he's talking purely about the school board, that wouldn't be within your jurisdiction. It should not be used as an opportunity.
If he can keep your comments regarding city business, we'd more than happy to hear you, but the school board, this is not the venue for it.
Que no se supone que la ciudad de Santana está...
Son dos diferentes organizaciones.
Pero están, son socios, ¿verdad? Son...
Claro que trabajamos juntos, porque están en la ciudad, pero aquí...
Dos completamente diferentes.
Sí, ya sé. Nada más estoy usando el foro para hacer, este foro para hacer... Para dar mi mensaje a los votantes.
Permítame, este foro no se usa para eso. Entonces, con mucho respeto, si, por favor, puede hablar lo de lo que pertenece a la ciudad, y podemos continuar. Muchas gracias por entender.
No, no venía a hablar de la ciudad, venía a ver, a hablar de la proposición M que va a estar en las boletas del distrito.
May I just ask one comment, please? Just in the fairness in both ways, we might have some members of the public that aren't understanding what you're saying. We may want to let the interpreter also do that, for purposes of the record, for everyone?
Can you, if you want us to pause?
Yeah, I would, I...
Una pausa, por favor. Señor Cesar.
First of all, I'd like to thank the members who are present here. Here, you might think that I'm mistaken in this forum, but I'd like to take any forums that I can to speak about the measure that's coming up in November. My name is Venancio Chavez, I'm a resident of the city of San Ana for more than 25 years. In my country, many people use sayings to teach the people who are, to teach the young people, and I want to share some of these sayings with you. The one, it says, "The tree that grows crooked, it never straightens up," and the second one is, "Genius and figure all the way to the death." First, I want to, I want to use the first one to describe the Santa Ana Unified School District. And the Santa Ana Unified School District is a very crooked tree, and the voters of the city, even if we pass these measures for education, the district will never provide the quality education for our children. And you just have to see the prior bonds that were passed by the school district, and this is where we, where you had that question about whether it's appropriate to be here.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Madam City Attorney?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. I think that as we come upon our election season with our different ballot measures and things that will be coming forward, I may want to work with the city manager to make sure, and the city clerk to maybe post a statement on our agenda, that the city council will not entertain comments unrelated, particularly in elections. We've had this happen before at the county level or at the state level where people have come forward. And if that's something the council would like us to do, we can add that to your agenda.
Thank you. So if he, if the gentleman is purely going to talk about the bond measure, then we're done here for today. Thank you for understanding.
You know, I have someone suggest, I think the way for him to wrap up, because he spent the time to come here, is he could talk about the priorities of city residents, the relationship that he thinks he'd like to see between the city and the city council and the school board. And we talk about education often up here. Lo que recomiendo es que, miren, platique de las prioridades, los valores de los residentes de la ciudad, y también qué piensa que debe ser la relación entre la ciudad de Santana y el distrito escolar, pero ya ha hablado muy bien, gracias.
En realidad, la ciudad de Santana tiene un dicho, o lo tenía, no sé si ya se lo quitaron, en el cual decía, "La educación es primero." Si ese dicho fuera cierto, o si ese dicho realmente la ciudad lo pusiera en práctica, ya hubiera hecho algo, o ya hubiera tal vez participado con los distritos, con el Distrito Escolar, para que la educación estuviera mejor. Desafortunadamente, no lo han hecho, so, si dicen que nada más debo de hablar de la ciudad, entonces voy a hablar de la ciudad, y yo le recomiendo, como ciudadano o como residente de la ciudad de Santana, cámbienle logo a la ciudad. Ya no le pongan la, "La educación es primero" en Santana. Pónganle la, "La educación en Santana es en último lugar."
Muchas gracias por su comentario. Go ahead.
If you're saying, Santa Ana used to have a saying that was "Education first." If this is true, then Santa Ana would have done something about education, working with the Santa Ana Unified School District to improve education, and since this has sadly not been done, you should remove that slogan from the city and just call it "Education is last."
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gary Thomas, next speaker, last speaker.
I just wanted to make a real quick comment on 85A, class of 70 at San Ana High. This is my town, this is our town, and it was a disgrace what was done. I went to school with Isaac Curtis, went on to play professional ball, and I was just really angered. This is about 2525 North Main. I strongly oppose it. And I want to begin with a quote, and it says, "If the facts works for you, use the facts. If they don't, discredit your opponent." That was Abraham Lincoln. From the very get-go, this developer, at the first meeting, just began to discredit the piece of property in disrepair, homeless activity, vandalism, drug activity, and they had photographs to document that. And I called a friend line that works for San Ana PD, it's been there for 30 years. None of this was documented with San Ana Police Department. You know, this is what they're presenting to us. Can't trust them. You know, I think San Ana was targeted, because there at Main and 5 is a great entrance in and out of the freeway systems throughout California. First and, the 5 freeway, same thing. You know, it's a real chokehold, and I really feel that we're targeted in these buildings they're building, or targeted for the millennials, who are just here for whatever they need and then move on. You know, I just, it's, it's just real upsetting. And the traffic, everybody travels up and down Main to get down to south into town. They use Gran, use Tustin, they use Bristol. Those have become our freeways. We use 17th, Santa Clara. You sit there at Santa Clara and watch all the people come out of Floral Park to grab the freeway. You know, we've got Civic Center, got McFadden, Eddinger, Dyer. And the whole thing of it is, is we, the residents of San Ana, need to be listened to throughout the city, not just Park Santiago, everyone. I went out and picketed with the folks against Innovate because of the traffic problem there. Give me one more second and I'll be done.
Thank you, sir. If you could conclude, thank you.
All right. The last quote that I want to end with, and this pertains to the council and the city, says a good, this is from antiquity, "A good name is more desired than great riches. Favor is better than silver and gold." I want our city to be remembered with a good name, not like what happened in Mission Viejo. That's disgraceful what those folks did to us. This is our town.
Thank you, sir. Not seeing any more speaking cards. We're going to close public comments, and we're going to move on to city manager comments. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Councilmember Viegas, I just have one brief comment. I wanted to announce that next Tuesday, September 25th, at 9 a.m., there will be a press conference for the National Voter Registration Day. We have been partnering with San Ana Unified School District, San Ana College, San Ana Chamber of Commerce, League of Women Voters, and we're going to kick off a voter registration effort on that day, so we encourage everybody to attend. That's all I have, sure.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and we're going to move on to council member comments. Councilmember Tino Hedo.
Thank you, Councilmember Viegas. Just a couple of things really quick. Tomorrow, there will be a big expo at San Ana High School. The Santa Ana Unified School District over the summer has a bunch of programs all over the city. Tomorrow, they all get to showcase their stuff, so if anyone has a chance to go take a look at what our district is doing, we just heard an individual come on and kind of bad-mouth what's happening in the district, but I came back to work in this district two years ago, and it's a huge, huge difference what our students are doing. So, I encourage people to go see for themselves. Also, I encourage folks to go to the forum tomorrow. It's good to hear where everyone stands, what everyone's positions are, and I think it's going to, it's going to be very informational, so that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Tino Hedo. Councilmember Solorio.
Thank you, Councilmember Viegas, and nice job by chairing this end of the meeting. I want to thank all the residents that came out and your patience and waiting for your time to speak. You know, it is unfortunate that we don't have a full dius up here, but you know, since I've been back, I think this is really the first time that we lose a quorum like this, so I don't want folks to think that this is a normal occurrence. Also, part of the value in speaking is that, you know, these meetings are televised, they're online, there's a lot of folks that watch this meeting, including our very able staff who are here, and they're really, day in and day out, the ones, you know, getting the work done, because, you know, many individuals think that the council is full-time, we're not, you know, we're part-time, and so we really rely on the talent and the time of our staff, so I wanted to thank them. On a related note, in terms of thanking staff, Don Lane from West Floral Park spoke about the enforcement activity against the Happy Times Cyber Cafe, and that really came to a quick resolution, in part because of the activity of the residents, the intelligence, the concern, the various meetings, and obviously, code enforcement and our police department were instrumental in making that happen, as well as, you know, through this process, we've found out there's probably about a couple of dozen situations like that citywide. So, this was a learning lesson to address that other situation citywide. And I know as city tries to, the city staff tries to figure out how to improve the codes and enforcement activities to reduce that kind of activity that really probably has a gambling component, that maybe as part of that, we should consider a moratorium on cyber cafes and related businesses, or if nothing else, you know, some revisions to the code, as has been thought about. Finally, Mr. Helvig, I want to thank you for your ongoing participation at these meetings and bringing out residents. I know 2525 is obviously a big project, and I haven't taken any public position, but do know that I care about the time that you and the residents have invested in this, and the staff has been, you know, working with you all and developing the ERs that we can all review and make a decision down the road, so thank you for that as well, and good evening to everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Solorio, and I will report out, actually, before that, I want to thank, also, I want to echo the thanks to San Ana Police Department for an excellent job they did on that cyber cafe. Got a lot of attention. I'm going to report out, I was in Washington, DC yesterday and came back this afternoon, and I was in Washington at the Department of Justice at the Community Orientated Policing Section to advocate for more grants for recruitment and training for our police department, and I also had a meeting at the Bureau of Justice Administration regarding those burn grants, the burn grants, and domestic violence grants also, because I want to help establish that Family Justice Center here in San Ana that we need, so that to streamline services for domestic violence victims and child abuse victims and elder abuse victims. And that is my report. I will, this meeting, we will adjourn in the memory of King Wilson, who was the, who is the husband of long-term and former assistant city manager Deborah Carita. He passed away unexpectedly over the weekend. He was an accomplished painter, retired city manager, and former Army Ranger airborne, Green Beret, served in the Special Forces of Vietnam from 1970, 1971, and he leaves behind two sons, Wyatt and Skylar, and his wife, Debbie. We extend our deepest condolences to the friends and family, and adjourn tonight's meeting in his memory. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Meeting's adjourned.